I didn't, did we have all the counselors? There's three. There was Dick. There's Rick. Did Alex come on?
Haven't seen him yet.
Okay. We got. Okay, so Alex and Rich are kind of on the. My. One screen. So then I've got Dick up above. Yeah, I got four counselors spread out on that screen, so.
I see Bill. I see Rich. I see Mike. I see Dick Olson. I see Bessie.
Matt, I'm still not able to get the, even if it weren't.
I can try to email it to you. A little weighty, but.
Can you email it to Comcast because on that iPad, I don't have the city email on my.
Oh, okay.
My name, cast.net.
What's that?
Just mine. And then.
Okay. All one word? Okay.
I'm Maryland.
How do I populate the people on the screen that want to see who is who? And I've got two, four, I've got six people on my screen. How do I get more than the six people?
Depends if you're on an iPad or laptop or what?
iPad.
Um, iPad, they got six.
Yeah.
Six, nine, I, you have to nine. Laptop, I can get them all. And then you, oh, actually, if you swipe your. I'll learn that one today. You swipe it?
Okay, so Mayor, I sent that to your Comcast address.
Just got it. I got it.
We're getting a audio feedback from somebody.
Want to mute everybody?
I was gonna say, yeah.
Okay.
There. You should be unmuted, Mayor. Mayor.
Yes, okay. All right. Is that it? Seven, seven fifteen, I think we're ready to get going. It's like, that's a chore trying to get all of our devices up and running. Folks for bearing with, but. Okay, and we have all the counselors here, and I think I see there's fifty people on that are participating, and then. Yep, I think I got them all on the screen. Okay.
Is there, is there any way we can see other participants?
I think, Dick, if you swipe your screen, you can. It's not, people don't have videos up. It's just a lot of initials.
Yeah, just scroll down, Dick. Just scroll down.
Or take your screen and swipe it.
Well, I've been trying that. It doesn't do anything.
Oh, okay, yeah.
All right, so I gotta find.
At the top of my screen, I see a view active cameras. And you can pick whether you want to see everyone, who's talking, just the active cameras.
And then I need to find. See Dick, Alex, us where you're at. Okay, there you are. All right. And now as soon as somebody pops up, it shifts the screen, so.
Well, I guess, I guess I don't need to see people.
Nah, me either.
All right. Okay, with that, good evening, everyone, and we are working remotely from our homes again.
This conference will now be recorded.
Due to COVID, but I want to welcome everyone, and with that, I'll call. And we're gonna put up a screen of the flight, so we'll do. Do that in your home. And as soon as Matt gets that put up. So. There you go. All right. Okay. Thank you, folks. And who is recording this evening? For staff.
I am here, Mayor, ready to take roll call.
Okay, all right, yes, thank you.
Dick Olson.
Here.
Mike Sykes.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Rich Kellum.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Muted.
Alex, did you say yes? Or you're here? Okay.
Bill Coburn.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary. All right, so this, we have our public hearing this evening, and what we've been doing on these hearings is having people submit their testimony in writing to staff, and staff has sent everything to all the counselors, and also it's been uploaded on our website with the agenda packet with that. So, I, on our tonight's agenda is a quasi judicial public hearing regarding a historic review of new construction of two, three-story mixed-use buildings within the Montez National Register Historic Overlay District on the property located at 525 and 533 Fourth Avenue Southwest and 331 Calipoya Street Southwest as described in Planning File H I O four twenty. I call to order this quasi judicial public hearing at seven nineteen PM. If you wish to testify, there were two options available. We were, we will describe on the council agenda. Do, that were described on the council agenda. Do any members, council members, wish to declare a conflict of interest?
I don't know if it's a conflict, but I got a call from Dave Penyard, and he was hoping that the minutes of the Landmarks Commission would be in our agenda. And I relayed that hope to Laura. And I don't know if that's a conflict or not, but nonetheless, I plan to vote on whatever we do tonight.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a conflict, Dick. That would be, so do any members wish to report any ex parte? Which that would be what you stated, ex parte. So.
Mayor.
Yeah.
I received an email from Citizen, and I forwarded that to Maryland.
Okay.
And it's in the packet now, too. So.
I received an email from a citizen. When I started to read it and saw what it was, I immediately deleted it. I did notice that that same individual submitted a letter.
Okay. Alex.
So Mayor, I did consult Bill Riles and his brother's health insurance, and that was before this whole thing happened. And so I want to let you know, I did have a talk with him about the, his brother's health insurance, so that's about it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor, this is Bessie. I've received this, probably the same email others have, and so, yes, I just deleted them.
Okay. Do any members wish?
I also received an email.
Okay, all right. Okay. And I didn't receive any, so this time, but do any members wish to report a site visit? I've been by in the past, probably everybody else has. Okay. And do any member wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings?
No.
No.
Does anyone wish to challenge the participation of any council member in this decision? If so, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon, or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself. State your name so you can be called on. That Ray? Yeah, I don't know why I have really small pictures over everyone, I guess, because there's so many here. Yeah, Ray?
That's me.
Uh huh.
You want me to go ahead?
Yes, uh huh.
Mayor, members of City Council, having been when you were seated, I'm sure some of you wondered, why do we keep having to go through this process? Where staff is required to justify polar opposite positions on the same topic, at least I did. Nevertheless, here we are again. It's no secret that during the run-up to where we are now, and while I was still on City Council, I was very adamantly and quite forthrightly on camera being strongly opposed to the process by which we got to this point. I have not changed my mind whatsoever in that regard. However, here we are. I watched the recent online landmarks meeting to see what kind of proposal might be given considering their strengths on that piece of property. It is my belief that the landmark decision was and is based on very subjective criteria for the specific points they raised in their denial. Notwithstanding what I call some irrational exuberance and hyperbole on both sides, I do have to come down very strongly in favor of the design put together by Bill Riles and his team to make the best use of the location. I say that from what I perceive are adjacent buildings that are zero in historic nature and have nothing that remotely suggests they should even be in the historic district other than possibly being grandfathered in to eliminate gerrymandering of the district borders. The design features the opportunity for small businesses, professional food-based or retail, on the first floor, and even has a small park in their area. It could have been designed as a big box complex, but Bill has taken the high road, in my opinion. I hope, full-heartedly hope, council approves the appeal and the design is submitted without the serious nitpicking I perceive. Because in ten to fifteen years, those minuscule changes will never be wished for nor even remember. Thank you. Ray Kopczynski, thirteen oh three, timer at court northwest, all things.
So, so Ray, I think that was a part of your test, the question I was asked was, does anyone challenge the participation of a council member in this hearing and decision? So you just read, read your testimony?
I asked if I should, I asked if I should start, and you said yes.
So, so we'll take note, you're challenging if anybody's participation, but that was kind of a pre, that was preview of your testimony, so, correct?
Do I have to say it again? Read it again?
No, no. I just said you're not, you're not challenging the participation of a council member.
True.
Okay, cool. All right, anyone? Okay, and so at this time, then, for testimony, for those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the county parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony evidence must be directed towards approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code which leave to apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the City Council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to all the parties if reasonable opportunity to. So you are the app to raise constitutional other relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough tail to allow the local government or its designee foods and action for damage. For. So at this time.
Mayor, before we start, ma, may I say something real quick? This is Sean. So I just want to point out tonight that the underlying decision by the Landmarks Commission is included in the packet and is made part of the record of this proceeding that the council has been provided. Additionally, one of the comments that you, you said in your opening statement, I want to quick make sure that people or the councils aware that it says that the city may allow a continuance or keep the record open. That is language that's normally included in an initial evidentiary hearing. This is not an initial evidentiary hearing. The initial one was the Landmarks Commission. So if council wants to continue it, it's well within their rights to do so, but they are not required to do so by any means. So I just wanted to make sure that they were aware of that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sean. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Thank you for listening to my staff report this evening. So Mark T. Signer has submitted a historic review of a new construction application for the construction of two, three-story mixed-use buildings on a lot in the Montez National Register District.
Can I ask if this is Laura? I can't see anybody.
Yes, it is.
This is. And can everyone hear me okay, or should I turn up the microphone?
I can hear you, but I can't see you, so I'd like to know who it is.
Okay.
I think I know who it is. I'd like to know for sure.
Yeah, her webcam working on my end, but.
Yeah, mine too.
Yeah.
So thank you, Mr. Olson. This is Laura LaRocque, the planning.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So as I mentioned, we have a historic review application for construction of two, three-story mixed-use buildings in the Montez National Register District. The property itself is located in the northeast corner of the Calipoya and Fourth Street intersection, and is located within the mixed-use downtown zone district. On May sixth and May nineteenth, the Landmarks Commission held hearings to consider the application, considered verbal and written testimony and deliberated on the matter, ultimately decided to deny the application based on the findings that it didn't meet two of the review criteria in Albany Development Code, section seven point two, seven zero, one, A and B, more specifically regarding the setbacks of the proposed structure and the size and scale of the structure themselves. As stated by the Landmarks Commissioners in that meeting, the denial was not outright on the basis of the entire project. It was limited to the refinement elements of setback and height and size. They felt that instead of posing conditions that could have unintended consequences, that they would instead deny the application outright to provide the applicant to review the application to see if you wanted to make modifications and re-submit. On May nineteenth, or excuse me, May twenty ninth, the applicant requested a de novo hearing of the application, which is allowed by our Albany Development Code. As stated by Sean at the beginning of this meeting, and for those of you who aren't familiar with the term de novo, it means that we begin the review anew, as if we've never heard it before. In this case, information that had been included previously may be included. In this case, Counselor Olson, as he mentioned earlier, did reach out and request that the information presented to the Landmarks Commission in the form of written testimony and audio links be provided to all of councils so that they had that information before them this evening, as they're deciding on the matter. So as I stated in the memo that was provided in advance of this meeting, I wanted to lay out some decision-making context for you to be aware of. All of our land use decisions have specific review criteria that we look at in determining. So it's not the basis of personal opinion on the application. It's based on findings of facts of the matter, had they pertained to the review criteria on a particular application. In this case, the review criteria is located in Albany Development Code, section seven point two, seven zero. Code states that the community development director or Landmarks Commission may find that the request meets the following review criteria in order to review a new when new constructions proposed in one of our historic districts. When new constructions proposed in the Montez or Hackelman district, the following review criteria apply. The first criteria is that the development maintains a unified development pattern such as sidewalks, street tree location, setbacks, building coverage, and orientation to the street. The second review criteria states that the structure is similar in size, scale of the surrounding buildings, and as much as possible reflects the craftsmanship of those buildings. The third right view criteria states that the building materials are reflected of and complimentary to existing buildings within the district. As stated in the memo, and I'll highlight again today, as you can tell by reading these review criteria, there's very subjective terms. So imposed of clear setbacks that say that you have a minimum of, say, five feet or a maximum of ten, this review criteria includes terms that say things like unifying, similar, complimentary of. So as you can imagine, different people arrive at different conclusions when they're reviewing the same application. This is not uncommon in these types of reviews for decision-makers to have different decision outcomes when they're presented the same information. I suspect that that might be the case even this evening. The other struggle with this application that the Landmarks Commissioner took a close look at, as well as staff, is just the conflict of where the property is located in the zone district that it's at in relationship to the historic district itself. So let me turn now to my screen, and I'll show you a map that can talk more about the zone district.
Can't see that either.
Yeah, it's gonna take just a moment so I can get the share screen functions presented.
Could we take Matt off and put your screen on, maybe?
It's coming back.
Hey, there, I see it. Amazing. Okay, thanks.
So bear with me a minute, the, gonna get to the presenter view here.
Kind of tight.
I proved my function so I can see as well. So before you, on the screen, you should now be able to see a map. On the map, your colors may be a little bit different, but there's a broad outline that shows the outline of the Montez Historic District. Within the larger boundaries, there is a smaller portion that shows the location of the subject property. It appears yellow on my screen, but it's at the northeast corner of the Calipoya and Fourth, towards the northern extent of the Montez District. You'll see that there's some shaded blocks within that particular area of the subject development. Those shaded blocks show where the downtown mixed-use zone is located in relationship to the Montez National Register District. So, you know, why do I go out to point out these differences? Really, there's some tension between the zone and the historic district itself. So in two thousand seventeen, the zone designation on this property changed from historic downtown to a downtown mixed-use zone. Both of those zones ultimately encourage density and infill residential development and in high-density type qualities. This is in direct opposition, you could say, to the Hackelman Montez Zone that surrounds the property predominantly to the south and west of the site. The Hackelman Montez Zone is a single-family residential zone district that prohibits multi-family development. So as you can see, it's challenging to develop a site that's located within a downtown mixed-use zone district that encourages intense infill development when it's exactly across the street from a zone that encourages single-family development itself. So there's some tensions, and what's allowed on the site property within the zone that is located, especially when you're looking at historic review criteria that says that you're comparing it based on the district that it's in. The district itself has a small portion that is located in a downtown mixed-use that has mixed uses itself, commercial, industrial. But it's also located in a register, a national register historic district that's predominantly made up of single-family residential development with some non-compatible structures, so things that were built outside the historic period, such as gas stations, modern commercial buildings, and also institutional buildings like churches and things of that nature that you'd find quite regularly in a residential district. As you can see, we have two items that make the decision-making process in this one a little bit more challenging than your normal land use review. You have subjective terms. That's up to the decision-maker to interpret and decide. You also have a transitional development area where historic district development patterns and the intent of the development code can sometimes be at odds, which makes the decision-making process in this particular application quite challenging. To wit this, I won't cover my entire staff report. I'll talk about the item that had the most discussion in the previous hearings, and those centered around setbacks, height and size of the structure. So you'll find in the memo and also the staff report that staff has recommended some additional setbacks for the proposed structure to bring it more in line with a unified pattern of development on the street. Bear with me while I flip the slide to the next. So this is looking closer at the subject site. Again, the subject site is located at the northeast extent of Calipoya and Fourth. It's shown, highlighted in red. The buildings that are sketched in here are not extremely accurate. Those are drawn in by myself, so there may be some errors in actual placement. But what they're intended to show is how the buildings that are proposed align with the development that's within the same block and in the broader surrounding neighborhood. So as I describe in the staff report, buildings that are located along Fourth Avenue, you can see, have a zero setback when you're looking at the northwest corner of Washington and Fourth, where that building sits right against the property lines of Fourth and Washington. There's a smaller single-family residence just to the east of the subject site that has a minimal setback. The porch is a few feet of the property line while the main facade of the house is back further. And when you're looking around the development pattern along Calipoya Street, you see that there's not much within the same block. There's one existing building to the north of the site that's setback approximately fifteen to twenty feet from the front property line. In relation to the proposed building, there's been offset along that street pattern. I've recommended as a condition of approval to increase the setback of the building that's located with the predominant front along Calipoya Street to be more in line with what's existing on that block and also within the neighborhood. The setback recommendation is not a fixed number. It offers a range. That range was intended to allow the applicant himself to take a look to see what might make the most sense, while still bringing that building more in line with the existing development. As you see in your decision outcomes in front of you, you may choose to uphold the staff recommendation. You could choose to put in a specific number. That number could be higher or lower than what staff recommends. Or should you find that that's necessary to meet the review criteria, you can make some findings to set that as well. The second item, size and height. Talk a little bit more detail. So the mapping of the building. This is the proposed building that you can see, well, one of them, and what it shows is that the building itself is larger than comparable structures within the same block. So you can see from this building footprint, if you were to set the home to the east on top of the development, the proposed development would almost be twice the size of that letting home. The width of the home is also wider as well. So there's some design features that the applicant and their architect have done to break up the building facade to make it seem like it's smaller segments of a building. So on the bottom portion of this, I don't think you can see my, oh, there's my arrow. If you can all see this area that I'm circling here, you'll see that the two sides of the building as opposed to the center are offset. So what that does when you're looking at the elevation, the center portion of the entrance is recessed. In this case, proportions are closer to the street, but it breaks up that building facade into almost three different. What that does is create an illusion of the street or when you're viewing the property that it's not one solid mass of one front building, but instead has some variations to it, so it breaks up that size. What I have recommended in the condition of approval is to increase those offsets so that visceral difference or that segmenting of the building frontage is more drastic, to create the illusion that it doesn't quite have so much mass from the street. Again, council could choose to uphold that. The numeric standards that are recommended in the condition approval could be modified to either increase or reduce those, or you could also choose to make findings that state otherwise where this particular condition approval. Maybe there might be another one that you could think of to help break up that mass. Maybe there might be another one that you could think of to to help break up that massing of the building. The last piece that I'll talk about tonight is height of the structure. We'll go back to some of the photos of the surrounding buildings. So these properties here that show on the screen are what is immediately to the south across Fourth Avenue from the proposed development. You'll see that it has a raised basement on one, so it's a one and a half story. To the west of the subject site across California Street, there are some higher structures here. These have elevated foundations, but they're just two story. This is the property immediately to the north of the subject site. This one as well has a raised foundation with two stories above it. And then these properties here are immediately to the east of the subject site. The one is fronting the subject site along Fourth Avenue and the other one is to the east of the site, but off the alley. And both of these are one story structures. The applicant is proposing a three story structure. The first story is proposed to be 14 feet in height. The next second and third story are residential stories with a proposed wall height of eight feet. Having a hard time reading my screen, so let me just double check the map here nine feet, excuse me. And then there's a distance between the top of the wall and the peak of the roof of just about seven and a half. The total height of the structure is 40 feet 10 inches. So this is just a few feet from the 45 foot max of a building within the next to a residential historic structure. Staff has recommended a condition of approval to reduce the overall height by four feet, including a reduction of two feet in the first floor. We have a design standard in our development code that requires a commercial level when it's on the first floor to be 14 feet. However, usable commercial space doesn't necessarily have to be that high and historic overlay standards does allow discretion in these. If you're trying to meet compatibility with the surrounding district. But this was found to be one way that the overall height could be reduced while still having the functionality that the applicant proposed. This could be similar to to say that the second and third story itself could be reduced from eight to nine feet. There are some other practices you could reduce their overall height of the roof pitch and and things of that. But this is aimed at is reducing the overall height by a specific number. One of those is specific to a level. The other one allows some flexibility to the applicant to see what might make the most sense for their particular development. Materials, I won't get into that very much. The landmarks commission did not spend too much time on that one either. There are a number of conditions of approval that are recommended by staff. These are more or less clarification pieces. So these are items that were not found in the application. So these are more or less to draw your attention to that there are some components that you might see on a rendering that don't necessarily match a drawing. Some of these elements do change between the rendering, which is the characteristic of the building and the drawing itself. Things that staff noticed the most when we're looking at the building material was predominantly on. Building number two that had a side facade that fronted Fourth Street. On that particular side, you you can see that there is a mix of window types for some have grids, some are vertical slides, some are horizontal. So some conditions were meant to to put some consistency in that and and also to make it more compatible with what you find in the district. Which predominantly single hung, double hung, one over one type opposed to the sliding things through there. So those items, as I mentioned in the memo, are items that the applicant could provide some clarity on. Councils could find that these items aren't necessarily items that need attention or some other ways that we could review these throughout the process just to make sure. Information proposed is what the community felt was was being reviewed and approved ultimately at the building permit stage. So with that, I will end my long winded presentation and turn it back over to council to see if you have any follow up questions or clarifications that I can make.
Any counselors have any questions for Laura regarding the staff report? I think Alex, was that your end up?
Yes. So my question is that the 40 feet seven seems to be an issue from when I read the the document. For the second or third time, is that within?
I didn't quite hear the end of that. Could you repeat that please?
Is the 40 feet, is the 40 feet seven inches within code?
The maximum height for this type of development and the location it is is 45 feet per the downtown mixed use zone. But to remind you, the review criteria does say similar in size. So you're making that comparison based on things that were in the Monty district.
So what's so can you tell me what the next lowest property is near that building? Proposed building?
There's two, the one to the east is a single story structure. There's a delay in my screen. I'm trying to flip back here. It might take just a minute.
Everybody's on that right now. I understand.
And then there is a property to the north that had a slightly elevated foundation, kind of a daylighted basement and two stories above it. If you you can think of terms of numbers, we don't have. The specific number or the height of structures, but on average, one story is eight to 10 feet. So you guessed me with a root, then that would put it in the realm of 20, 12 feet for the the structure just to the east and. Perhaps 30 feet for the structure to the north and and these are just ballpark numbers. I don't know the exact.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, everyone's screen is really little right now with so many folks on the bridge. Yeah.
Yes, you said surrounding properties. Now, does that mean adjacent property? Or does that mean like in a neighborhood, the surrounding properties? I mean, we're talking about two different things, I understand. With neighborhood being kind of what's around you and then the district being a specific line, but. It's supposed to be similar to the surrounding properties. How far away from the building is surrounding? Is there a definition?
There is not. No, that is is one of those subjective terms that I mentioned that isn't defined by any certain parameters.
Okay, second. So how many different styles of buildings are there in the Monty district? I mean, I, you know, just off the top of my head, I was thinking a dozen or 15. The different styles of, you know, there's the the little bitty house next door. And they range in age from what a night 1850s to not very long ago, from what I understand, in the neighborhood. Do you have a feel for that?
I think you're you're on target. There is a wide range of styles within the district as well as construction dates.
Okay, what makes one better than another?
I think that's up to personal opinion. It doesn't talk about being better than another.
Yeah.
Not quite sure.
That's that's my point. It's another nebulous thing. Then the fact that we're talking about, they should be. More or less close to the surrounding properties. I mean, if you if you go out half a block, you're outside the district only in a five story tall building. You go. What's south and east, you have White Spire Church, which is much larger than either one of these and taller. You go a block or two. To the east. I you have First Christian Church, which is not taller, but it is certainly a lot larger. You go to the west. Building what, three or four times bigger in the water point. If you're talking about scale, so I guess. My way of thinking, surrounding properties is what that means is a big deal. And I guess if if you don't have. Some kind of. Well, if there's no rules or whatever to say what it is, well, then it creates a nebulous thing for us. And that's all I had.
Respond to that again to to point out the review criteria does say within the Monty and Hackelman district. So as staff was looking at this, we really use the the boundary district lines is 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 that boundary. In terms of surrounding, I think there was more analysis on things of budding this site. However, just talking generally that the residential development that occurs predominantly in the Hackelman Monty district. Was found to be one to two story with some institutional buildings and other structures such as had mentioned that are a bit taller.
That are outlined. Yeah. I guess if you look at the the quintessential. Historic building that we have in that area would be the Monty House. Which is in kind of a snout of the the district goes out around it. And it is bounded by a street and across the street is a building that's gigantic compared to it. Down the street, not very far is that same five story tall. That while it is outside of the district, it is in the neighborhood. I mean, if the or I say it's in the neighborhood to my way of thinking it's in the neighborhood. Because in my neighborhood, it's a couple, three blocks away is the neighborhood. I don't, you know, I don't know if there is a definition there or not. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, counselors, anything else? Okay. And. Hang on. Okay. And so we will. From the applicant with. Name, address. On a half of the council. We're getting feedback.
Mayor?
Yeah, who says that camera we're getting feedback on? Matt, is it Dix?
This is Bill Close for the applicant.
Oh, okay.
It's Bill. Yeah.
And I'm gonna try my camera now. We'll see what happens.
Okay.
And. Here comes my camera. I don't know if that's working for you. It's working for me for those that you can't, for those of you that can't see me. I'm the old guy in the muted pattern aloha shirt.
We can see you.
We can see you, but there's nothing. Are you work, are you gonna have any text put up through your screen or not?
No, I I don't need to project any text.
Okay.
And and I'm gonna speak on behalf of my client, the applicant tonight. I know my client wants to speak and I believe the client's architect is here as well. I didn't know if we had a fixed order, but I just jumped in because that's what I do. So if it's okay with everybody, I'll speak first for the applicant and then.
The major. Address and all that for the record.
Sure. Bill Close, K L O O S, Land Use Attorney, 375 West Fourth Street, Suite 204 Eugene. And. You folks have a letter from me, which staff was kind enough to distribute earlier today. And if you can't remember what you had for dinner, it's probably because you were reading my letter so intently. But since you've had a chance to read that, I can go through and highlight points in kind of summary fashion and and be more brief. Big picture here. My client, this is the second step on a really long road, long, expensive, tedious road for my client. You can see from my letter what it took in terms of cost to get through the process, just clearing this site of the condemned buildings and. At least opening the door to file this application. It's been very expensive. The only people that have been winners so far are the attorneys that have been representing the litigants. At the Land Use Board of Appeals. I I noticed that the, so I prepared the appeal statement. Which was frustrating to do because the landmarks commission really said you failed to comply with these first two of the three criteria. But they didn't explain why. And in order to intelligently rebut or challenge a decision. You really need to know why the decision maker made the decision they did and we have no clue. So my my letter basically says, okay, let's take the criteria one at a time. And I use this, I use the staff report as a shopping list of problems. Because my hunch is, I mean, the staff has been very good, was very good, very thorough and aggressive in front of the landmarks commission at. Explaining why staff thought this didn't meet the standards and. Staff was very articulate and pointed in summarizing those points to the council tonight. So really, the staff report's been my target in drafting this letter for you. Drop back 500 feet, big picture. The application you have reflects several things. My client needs to put something on the property. The standards are very discretionary. They call for a very thoughtful design. My client hires an architect. The message to the architect is we've got a zoning code that sets basic parameters. We have these three standards for historic development. Here are my, as the landowner here, my objectives. Here's the city you're dealing with. Go do a design. And what the architect came back with is what's in front of you now. And so when it comes down to the actual design of the project. It is the product of a person who is a licensed architect with many years experience. And we all know that architects have an impeccable sense of design. I mean, they're licensed. That's what they're supposed to do. And so that gets put on the table and then the staff picks it apart. And what you really see, big picture, looking at the staff report is a different sense of design. You know, they're essentially saying if 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 we were doing it, we'd do it differently. But that shouldn't be a basis for saying no. The staff report is very candid in telling you that you have full authority to look at this design and approve it. Or prove it with conditions or deny it. And that's true. That's the nature of the standards that you're being asked to apply. And so what we're suggesting to you is that as compared to staff's comments about how they would change the design. Our architect got it right. And we're really asking you to agree with the professional design staff. And affirm what's been put on the table in front of you. Please don't apply any conditions. They slow things down. They're problematic because sometimes they aren't clear. This 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 application is approvable as it stands. Okay, so that's the big picture. So I'm gonna focus primarily on the first two standards that. On a list of three, and the reason for that is those are the two standards that the landmarks commission says we don't meet. Even though they don't say why, and I'm gonna use the staff report as a clue to why the landmarks commission was not happy. With the applications of those first two standards. They're all discretionary. They're all fuzzy, but they do have meaning. And my sense is that. In making this, in the staff's making their recommendations, they misconstrue the language of those standards. Don't need to get into why, but they haven't properly applied the plain language of those standards. So let's go. I just have two points here really under the first two items. The first standard is a, the development maintains any unifying development pattern. Such as sidewalks and street tree location setbacks, building coverage and orientation to the street. The key phrase there is maintains any unifying development pattern. So your starting point is to identify whether the subject area is trees, setbacks, building coverage. Your starting task is to identify a unifying development pattern. And then ask whether or not the development maintains that. So with that being a standard. Let's. Look at what staff have to say. There's really one issue here, one substantive beef, the front line setback. So staff wants a bigger frontline setback on California Street. They're okay with the setback proposed on Fourth Avenue. They look at the other buildings on Fourth Avenue and they say this one's close enough. And on Calaquilla, they look at a single building. And they say, hey, that building is 15 feet back from the property line. And in order to maintain that unifying development pattern, this building needs to come back several more feet. Now, moving this building back several more feet's a disaster, you have to start over and design it from scratch. You just can't pick it up and move it back, everything has to change, put that aside. The mistake the staff has made here is that they've started with the premise that there is an existing unifying, what's the phrase again? Unifying development pattern on, on Calaquilla. And that is defined by the 15 foot setback from that one dwelling. And I'm gonna suggest to you, there ain't no unified development pattern because there's only one building. Where's the pattern? You gotta have more than one to have a pattern. And then you have to look at the multiple buildings and say, what's the unifying aspect of this? And you can't identify that because there isn't one. So if there isn't a unifying development pattern, there's no need to try to, there's no need to require moving this building back in order to come closer to the existing setback of the one building that's on that street. So that, that's a basic misunderstanding of what the standard requires. And that's an upset about that. Before I leave the first criteria A, I want to touch on the question of the accessory buildings. If you turn to page 42 of the staff report where it shows the bird's eye view or I guess the architects would say plan view of the development site, development proposal, these six little cubbies, six little storage buildings in the, in the, in the back along the east property line. Those are just little storage sheds for folks gonna live in these units. I don't know if everybody gets a storage area, I don't know how many units or hard, but the point is, this is the kind of thing you typically have, it's a real standard accessory building. Staff have trouble with that, they say, we don't have enough information on what those are gonna look like, so you need to provide more detail, come back later and file a brand new $8,000 application and go through this process again. God help and save us, who wants to do this again? So. My client will explain, I think my client's architect will explain that we think that we have provided ample detail about what those little cubbies are gonna look like. And I won't get into that because I don't understand it, but as a fallback, could impose a condition which I directed here, which is set, which says that two accessory structures shown on the plans for resident storage shall be constructed with the same materials and finished with the same detailing as the primary structures. That's the point, they're, they're accessory, they're supposed to fit in. My plea to you tonight is, please don't carve those out and require a brand new application. Or maybe this will never get built while I'm still alive. So that's A. Now B is a completely different, similarly fuzzy standard, but terms have meaning. And again, I'm gonna assert that the staff's dissatisfaction with those, with the, the staff's heartburn about this proposal as measured against this standard in B reflects a misunderstanding, a really simple plain misunderstanding of what the language of B requires. So B, the structure is of similar size and scale of, of surrounding buildings and as much as possible reflects the craftsmanship of those buildings. This isn't about craftsmanship, this is about, staff's feature about size and scale. And the magic phrase is similar size and scale of surrounding buildings, emphasis, surrounding buildings. So there's two issues here for staff, one is offsets. Staff acknowledged that we have offsets on the fronts of these buildings, that's a basic design requirement. But they say, gosh, those offsets aren't big enough, they need to be five feet deep, not a foot and a half deep, whatever it is. So either, to go back, it means you have to go back and redesign off both of these buildings, you have to start from scratch on these buildings. You just can't wave a magic wand and have them work. The gist of the staff's heartburn here is, quote, the proposed offsets break up the wall plane but are not deep enough to reduce the perceived mass and scale of the building. And then they want a condition that, that will boost that setback to five feet. So. The problem here is that the staff has looked too narrowly at what this is supposed to match with. What our application did is we looked at the larger surrounding area and we, we looked at what kind of buildings were there, and there was a mix of residential and commercial. And that was our basis for comparison. If you, if you look at the, the, the mass, the size and scale of, of this building as compared to the range of buildings that are in the couple block area, we're similar, we're a good match, I mean, there are small, medium and large buildings, but we're a good match when you look at, at the bigger area. What staff did is they didn't look at the larger surrounding area and they didn't look at mixed use buildings, they didn't look at commercial and residential, they just looked at the nearby adjacent residential buildings, which of course are smaller. And when they looked just at the adjacent residential buildings, they said, oh, we need to break up this mass more to make them similar, and to do that, we're gonna require larger offsets which sends us back to the drawing boards or to actually start from scratch with the design. So. This should not be a basis for denial, it should not be a basis for conditioning. This council should recognize that if you look to the larger surrounding area and you look at both commercial and residential buildings, we're similar, staff doesn't take issue with that. That just looked at something different. They look too narrowly, so that's the offset issue. And the next issue under B is, of course, oh yeah, the size of building one, the error here in the staff is similar to, is similar to the error having to do with the offset. They wanna reduce this height of building one to, quote, respect the height of the abutting residential building to the east. So there's a little residential building adjacent to the east. And staff looked at that one residential building, just really small, and they looked at this building which is quite a bit bigger. And they said, huh, too big, we're gonna, we gotta reduce it, we gotta take a couple feet out of the second floor, gotta take a couple feet out of the third floor. And that of course sends us right back to the drawing boards, starting from scratch, you know, tell the architect to start all over. The problem here is again that the focus has to be on surrounding buildings, not just the abutting residential buildings. So staff looked, staff focused there, they stopped the aperture down too small. It's such that they were just looking at one abutting building instead of looking at all the buildings in the surrounding area. So again, our application, our narrative was premised on the larger surrounding area. And if you, and if you take that perspective, you're in good shape and you can approve this. So that's it, those are the two reasons why the landmarks commission said, no. I think they really got a bum steer from the staff in terms of, you know, how the staff read the standards and read them incorrectly. That's not to berate or degrade the staff's own sense of what design they would like, I mean, they're entitled to that opinion. There was a lot of give and take between the staff and the applicant early on in the process. We just got surprised at the end. Again, going back to mandate to our professional designer who looked at all these standards, looked at the surrounding area and came up with a design which we think you can approve. The third standard is item C, I, you know, again, the landmark quote, building materials are reflective and of, and complimentary to existing buildings within the district. Now. Our application was premised on looking at what's in the surrounding area. And the, my client and my client's architect can talk about this in greater detail, but when you inventory all the stuff in the, in the, in the nearby surrounding area, just everything, I mean, just about everything. And so there ought to be the widest latitude here in what materials go into this particular design. And I would point out too that it says building materials are reflective of and complimentary to existing buildings. Staff say, ah, we gotta have solid wood beams, not any artificial stuff, nothing that looks like wood beams, it's gotta be wood beams. That's not what the criteria says, the criteria says reflective of and complimentary to existing buildings, not exactly the same materials. So there ought to be some flexibility there too. Big picture here is that staff are recommending four conditions. You don't like those conditions generally. And more importantly, if you're inclined to oppose those conditions, please, please, please change them. They are written in a way that will guarantee that if somebody appeals this decision with the conditions that's drafted by staff, it's coming back in a in a remand from Logan. And the reason is that the, the conditions are written to require the applicant to submit a modified design for staff review and approval. Well, the moment staff start doing their view and approval, they're making a discretionary decision, discretionary judgment call about a specific site, and that has to be the subject of a public hearing or an opportunity for public hearing, notice to surrounding property owner, opportunity for public hearing. And if there isn't that, that notice and opportunity for hearing, Logan's gonna send it back and tell you to try again. So if you, if you simply must impose conditions, I've redrafted the conditions, I've taken that discretionary language out so that the conditions at least will be safe on appeal. That's a very technical point, your city attorney can talk to you about that in great detail. But that pretty much ends, that's longer than I wanted to speak and I appreciate your patience. So I'll wrap it up here and kind of turn it over to my client and he can figure out what we do next. Thank you very much for your attention.
All right, thank you, and Mark and Tina, or Bill wanting to speak.
I'll go.
Okay, so you'll need to state your address, name and address and first your name.
Okay, Mark Signer, our address is 516 Coons Drive in Albany. Good evening, City Council and Mayor, thank you all for your time and consideration tonight. This is, like Bill said, been a long, expensive, for us, frustrating affair so far, and we hope things turn around tonight, and so here we go. We come to you with a great amount of frustration, the process to get here has seemed very biased, subjective and essentially a challenge that lacks common sense and clear direction. To show the bias here is one example. The city demolished the house at 610 Sherman Street in late January of this calendar year against the homeowner's wishes. The house had 133 calls for service to the address of three years and methamphetamines contamination was found to be evident. On the flip side of this, we wonder why we have had to spend $85,335.73 to tear down three structures that amassed 183 calls for service over a two-year span. One of the structures was identified as a drug lab in 1997. The structures were condemned and the inhabitants were removed. Was not supportive of our demolition proposal and ultimately the city council made a common sense decision. As we've come before you tonight, we have owned this property going on now three years and are still a long way from obtaining the building permit. The plan before you is not an ill-conceived, thrown-together work. As a result of this exorbitant cost, time and frustration with the demolition, we wanted this new project to be spot on for the area. Starting this project and in light of the divisiveness of the previous demolition, wanted to have the best people involved with the new design. Bill Riles is that person, he's creative, innovative, intelligent, a longtime local architect as well as someone intimately familiar with the Albany and downtown area. He's also sensitive to development within the historic district, he was and is the perfect man for the job. Many hours have been spent in meetings and discussions and drafting to achieve this plan. City codes, zoning and design and the historic have been strictly adhered to. We have gone above and beyond to make this something this city and historic district would be proud of. Size, scale, which are two of the contentious issues. Parking and building materials were all factored into this design, the project checks every box. It is a great fit for this area. At this point, you know, I, I hope that all the councilmen and women have criteria A, B and C, and we went through those, so I think you know the criteria and I'll try to, you know, in effort to be brief and not bore you, I'm gonna skip some of that. We have shown that we have met criteria A, B and C, I'm gonna skip over to about page four here of my presentation. We have designed this structure to meet the city of Albany building codes, this cannot be a moving target, which it's felt like. There are clear design criteria including home heights to achieve minimum and maximum setbacks to meet and so on. Referring to Albany Development Code 5.030 that directly states, the DMU zone is intended for a mix of retail, services, institutions, offices and housing that support businesses in the historic downtown district. Mixed uses are encouraged, both horizontally and vertically. Horizontally and vertically being pretty important words. High-density residential infield and office employment are both encouraged. With that in mind, I would reiterate that this project is spot on for the zone. The height allowance in the DMU zone is 85 feet. Our buildings are less than half of that height in an effort to be sensitive and it's also because of a more restrictive historic overlay, which is 45 feet. We met all the setback requirements, not pushing the limits as some big city developers might, we incorporated as many parking spaces as possible in a zone where no parking requirements even exist. We have strived with the design of this plan to go above and beyond in an effort to make it project compatible with the DMU zone and a great fit for this area. With that in mind, I will segue to the issue of compatibility. People want this project to be compatible. Compatibility does not mean the same. Diversity within the historic district is a beautiful thing, it is perfectly harmonious to have a bungalow style next to a Victorian, next to a salt box, next to a church, and you could go on and on there. A one-story apartment can be seen next to a three and a half story, single-family home in our district. And if I could get Laura to help me share the screen here, we have a, some pictures I like to put up. I'm not sure how we get you guys to be able to see those.
You should be a presenter now, so if you put your mouse towards the bottom, you will see a screen.
It was just there, hang on, I think it went away.
We, we do see your slide, so it is visible to us.
We just can't.
We're not seeing it ourselves.
Oh wait, there we go.
Okay, so we're going to the first picture here is a, this is on Fifth Street, so our project's on Fourth and Calaquilla, this is block over. This is a three-story house with a basement, you know, and in the foreground, you're seeing a house, you know, I don't know, built, it's not even a house, it's an apartment complex. You know, one story difference, but those both, you know, picture that is seemingly working fine in Albany, I don't, you know, that's that picture. Picture two A, you're seeing white spires and that's on the corner of Fifth and Washington. And directly across the street is a law office, it's a brewery. And, you know, real close by, these are all within a block. Now this is over on Fifth Street, there's a house, 3A, the house we just recently remodeled, it was it was a three-and-a-half-story house, got a full basement, and right adjacent to it is a, picture three is just a one-third, a little more modest, and they've been there for a long time, you know, and they're doing well together. Well, here, this is just up the street, these are on Fourth Street, just, and if you continued west on Fourth, you'd run into the power plant and the water treatment plants, you know, the water treatment plants, a huge building, you know, it has size and scale that neither of our two buildings can even come close to. That's slide five here that you're looking at is a five-story building, this is on Third Street, and, you know, somebody might say, well, that's not in the, in the historic district or something, so it's, you know, these little imaginary lines still make them in the surrounding neighborhood that doesn't go away just because an imaginary line says something. So there, there's a five-story building, living harmoniously right across the street is, looks to be a duplex, a one-story duplex. This is a picture, you know, we've had some opponents say, well, you're gonna be towering over our backyard and looking down into our yard. So this yard that you're looking at, it's a project we're working on right now on Fourth Street, about a block west, and then you're seeing the blue house is a three-story with a basement under it, house looking down into our yard, and it's, we didn't, weren't deterred from buying this property because that house looked into our yard and didn't win our property value, and it didn't make its, you know, poor choice, so I, I mean, I just, I'm trying to give people a sense of, you know, all of these slides that you've seen are within a block or two, and that definitely would seem to me to be surrounding area, surrounding buildings. So with that, you know, I would say, this project meets criteria one of unifying development patterns such as sidewalks, street trees, location setbacks, building coverage, orientation to the street. This project meets criteria two of being similar in size and scale of surrounding buildings, and as much as possible reflects the craftsmanship of those buildings. So all those pictures that I've shown you are surrounding buildings, and that is in keeping with similar size and scale. There is great diversity in within this district. Criteria is met wholeheartedly and is compatible. This project meets the criteria three as well. Building materials are reflective of, we have gone beyond with our architect, Bill Ryles, to create a design that complements and has a unique detailing to fit into this area. In response, in summary of the testimony in opposition, we have shown that this project has met all this criteria and is sensitive to those in opposition. Proposing testimony made claims of being too big. This project has an element of commercial space which pushes the development. In our pre-application meetings, they, it was a 14-foot minimum from the first floor to the top of the floor, and that 14-foot makes this building a little bigger from the get-go, and it's, this zone is intended to be a transition from strictly commercial to a more residential area. The zone encourages a mix of retail offices, services, et cetera. That will be downtown, also enables residents to walk to the shops and services, and it reduces the need for cars and trips across the town to the, you know, mall or box store or something like this. It checks the boxes of what this zone is designed for. I mean, when we come to the city and say, what would be your ideal thing? This is what they say, this would be it. So we, we're trying to do that. The Landmarks Advisory Commission have denied our application due to the size and the height of this project. The fact is, this project is well under the height restriction in a zone that encourages mixed-useful horizontally and vertically. If the zone encourages this type of development, then approval should reasonably follow. The structures that were previously on this site were two-and-a-half stories. This project is three. Higher structures provided visibility into their backyards, and this will happen if anybody has a two-story house in this neighborhood. If the proposed development is under the height of the DMU zone and the more restrictive historic overlay, how can it be too tall? If we're 40 feet, but more restricted height is 45, how can we be too tall? This is a concrete number, it's not subjective, it's concrete, 45 feet, we're under that. No, we're in for discussion, the project is well within the height restriction. In regards to the proposed development being too big, the DMU zone has no applicable restriction for minimum lot size or maximum building size. Building coverage for the proposed development will be 42% of the building lot. This is consistent and within the framework of the DMU zone. Summary or denial based on criteria one and two of ADC 7.270 are ridiculous, as we have shown there is great diversity of size and scale within the surrounding neighborhood. The city has also given eight conditions of approval. We feel these integrity of the project to retain the design Bill had in mind. Condition one wants a separate review for a designed storage for the resident. The storage is part of this submittal and will have the same detailing as the overall project. To ask for a separate historic review, application for the said proposed accessory structures, it's redundant. The storage for the resident is part of this site plan. Condition two deals with setbacks. Project complies with the setback requirement of the zone. The buildings are well, the project already has. I have never seen any requirement for offsets. Bill Ryles has designed an extremely well-thought-out plan that is attractive and compatible with the zone and sensitive to the overlay. He is an architect with 40 years of experience. He is the expert here. To make a condition for larger offsets is very subjective. The planners that are asking for the conditions are not licensed architects, nor do they have the technical expertise that Bill Ryles has acquired through his licensure and many years of experience. Condition four deals with height. The DMU zone encourages development horizontally and vertically. The DMU zone allows a height of 85 while the overlay is 45, we kind of hit that pretty hard. We're under all that, so condition four should not be a factor. Conditions five through eight deal with design details. We have been in construction for over 30 years, no preference. Who gets to decide what looks good? We like the look of smooth siding as well, we're, we like smooth siding, that's great, but shingles, whether wood or hardy plank, have texture. Is this wrong? We like painted windows in some instances, but are non-painted windows wrong? Is trim that is made of composite materials impervious to rot in the elements wrong? Some solid wood, like spruce, doesn't hold up as well as Douglas fir, which doesn't hold up as well as cedar, which doesn't hold up as well as concrete or polyurethane? So all these things factor in here. The detailing does matter, but advances in this day and age should allow for flexibility in what product is used. Is brick better than stone or better than precast concrete? All three provide great appearance and function, and all three are great options. In order to create something beautiful, some leeway must be given to the architect and builder. While we can agree to some conditions such as smooth siding, painted windows, five-inch window trim, we feel that the red tape of having each item approved is very subjective and unnecessary. It was brought to light that other, in the Landmarks Advisory Commission meetings, that there are other projects that have been afforded this leeway. We would expect the same courtesy. Although our findings of fact and architectural renderings were omitted by staff initially, hopefully you have had the opportunity to review them, and as such, we feel conditions five through eight should not be a part of this approval. Landmarks Advisory Commission erred in denying our proposal, and we hope that you will reverse that decision with no conditions. Thank you for your time and consideration, it is very appreciated. I mean, I come off maybe mad, but it, you know, I've just.
Okay, all right, thank you. And did Bill, was Bill gonna say anything?
Yeah, I'm ready to talk. I don't have much to say because it sounds like.
Make sure for the rec, Bill, you do your name and add, please.
Yeah, my name is Bill Ryles, R-Y-A-L-S. I live at 935 Jones Avenue Northwest in North Albany, and I was born here. And we went to school together, didn't we, Sharon? So I would like to tick, hello?
Can we stop sharing the screen? There's nothing on it, please.
Yeah, can we stop that sharing of the screen?
There's nothing on it. Who's sharing the screen?
Yeah, Mark, can you stop sharing your screen?
So Mark, if you hover towards the bottom of your go-to meeting, there'll be a screen button that appears that you can click.
It there, yeah.
Or that way you'll be able to disable a camera if needed.
Well, yeah, unfortunately, once you promote somebody to present or you can't.
Okay, Mark, just, just go to that and turn off your sharing.
Or quit go-to meeting, well, no, that would kick you out of the meeting.
On your bottom toolbar, there's an orange button that looks kind of, I don't know.
Click on that.
Oh.
Yeah, it was there for a second.
I will go back to that go-to.
Yeah, it was there for a second. If you hold your button on, then you can pick, all right, you can hide.
Hide or quit, or?
Hide.
Hide.
I don't think that's, that just hides the application, it doesn't hide the meeting.
There we go.
There we go, perfect.
All right, thank you.
Okay. The name is Bill Ryles, R-Y-A-L-S, 935 Jones Avenue. Everyone has sort of done a great job of encapsulating this, and I'm not since years now. One of the things that occurred to me is what is the Landmarks Commission's purpose? It was established by the City Council in 1979. How many people lived here in 1979 and understand the condition of the historic district and the downtown at that time? This district was, yeah, a lot of us, and this district was put here in order to rescue a town that was dying, a town that was suffering from a lack of investment and a lack of care. And you can argue that the historic district has been a great part of the rebirth of this town, and that the people at that time who installed this district and later the Cara District were very foresighted. And I actually, you know, lived here at that time, and I knew some of those people, and so I kind of went to look at why they installed this Landmarks Commission, and it's right here, this is sort of the, I don't know if you can see that, that's the front page of the website. If you look up the Landmarks Commission website, you will see this on the front page, and I just want to read a little bit. It says here that according to the municipal things, protection, enhancement, and the perpetuation of improvements to the districts. The protection, that's to the existing districts, the enhancement would be improving those existing, and perpetuation of improvements in districts which represent or reflect elements of the city's cultural, economic, political, and architectural history. It seems like we've forgotten most of that, and we're just sort of focused on the architectural history, but the district is really much more than that. If you read down a little bit, it says that this district is intended to strengthen the economy of the city and the property values, and to promote the use, the use of historic districts and landmarks for the education, the pleasure, and the welfare of the people of the city. That's what we're doing. The landmarks is not meant to be vinyl window police. And frankly, I think landmarks has forgotten that. I think that everyone on my commission and staff should read this and think about what it says, that this commission and this district were created for the welfare of the people of the city, for their enjoyment. Is the people who started this would just be gassed to think that our commission is being used to do just the opposite of what it was intended. And in final comment, I would just like to bring up, I appreciate all the comments so far, and I would ask those people who seem so readily questioning my skill in my decision-making, would you do that to Matt Bennett? Would you walk in his kitchen and tell him, oh, not enough salt in there, maybe you should put beef instead, oh, maybe this soup should be a salad? You would never do that because you wouldn't, you know in your heart that you have no right to tell Matt Bennett how to cook, but somehow, you all think you can tell me how to design buildings. If you want to design buildings, there's a way to do that. You go to school for about eight years, you study for another 10, and maybe if you're lucky, you can start building buildings, and then you work your whole life to get to where I am, and you find out, well, I guess it wasn't worth that much because everybody can do what I do. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay, all right. Is that it for the applicant's side?
This is Bill Close, I think that's it for right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we will now be taking public testimony, written material received up until 5:00 PM on June 23rd, were posted to the website for review by councilors and the public. I will now call upon those who registered to speak during this meeting, and, and that'll be in order. First, though, was Ray Kopcinski. Ray, did you want to just kind of reiterate that you had already did your testimony earlier? You want to just mention that. State your name, address, and state that you already had read your testimony.
Ray Kopcinski, 1303 Timorac Court, Southwest. I did read mine, I read it out of turn, I apologize for that, but it's on the record now.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ray. Then next, who signed up was Richard Engeman.
Engeman, Richard Engeman?
Yes.
Yes, hello?
Find you on the screen. Oh, there you are, okay. And state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Richard Engeman. I live at 955 Fifth Avenue Southwest in the Montita District, and I currently serve as the Board Secretary for Friends of Historic Albany. I will be testifying tonight on behalf of the Friends of Historic Albany, which is opposed to approval of this plan as it has been presented. The proposed project is within the established downtown, newly established downtown mixed-use zone, but most importantly, it is on, on top of that, is the historic district overlay zone, and as you know, overlay zones are applied over one or more previously established zoning districts, and this is done to establish additional or stricter standards and criteria for properties that are in that area. So while this new construction proposal meets most of the standards within the downtown mixed-use zone, it fails to meet the criteria of the historic downtown, or the historic district overlay zone. Just as an example or two of the properties that were described here by the applicants as being near, near to the proposal, it, the applicable comparison should be from within the district. Those district lines may be artificial, as somebody has pointed out, but so are zoning lines and city boundaries and a lot of other things. But so are zoning lines and city boundaries and a lot of other things. And we do need to hold projects within the historic Montefiore District to comparison with other structures that are within that district. For example, the Fisher Funeral Home on Washington Street is quite tall. Not but it is also a building with many setbacks. It also sits on, decided on Washington Street, which for decades was Highway ninety-nine and had commercial development. The proposal here is replacing three small historic houses and proposes something that is quite different in size and scale to what was there before and do what is generally found within the Montefiore District. Obviously, any district is going to have structures within it that are not part of the reason that the district was established, but were there before or had been constructed since with approval. Excuse me just a moment. The Riverview Apartments on Third Avenue, which is a block away, has been cited as a comparison large structure, but it is not within the Montefiore District. And it should not be something you compare with in this, in this instance. That building is a good example of what should not be built within an historic district. Granted, it faces buildings across the street that are in the district. That's fine. But it's not within the district. In your guidelines to new construction in Albany's residential historic districts on page twenty-seven of the agenda packet. The setbacks of the proposed projects do not match the setbacks of existing historic homes abutting the property. And that doesn't mean just those on the same block, but those that are adjacent and nearby that are within the district. And that's why there should be substantial setback on both Fourth and on Cala Puya. The scale, the mass, and the size of this project do not meet the criteria of the historic district overlay zone. If you look at the guidelines on page thirty and thirty-one of the agenda, you will see that. I was initially going to try to show you a model that we did that really makes a very vivid case for how much larger these proposed structures are. There are, however, photographs within your packet that show this model that we prepared. And you can see very well that the proposed structures are significantly greater than the adjacent homes. And it it just is way out of proportion. I'm afraid that it really does come down to, yes, the applicants need to go back and start from the beginning. This is not the proposal. It has been, in my opinion, created with respect to the existing laws of the city. Some of the proposed materials, such as aluminum storefront and cultured stone and powder coated metal, are out of, not consistent with predominant materials and in the, and so there are many things like that. One thing I suggest is that on the agenda pages thirty and thirty-one, there are some drawings that are designed to capture the spirit of the do this, not this, when you are preparing plans for infill structures in the historic district. And if you look at those and you look at the this and the not this, you see that this plan is a not this plan. And we respectfully request that the council send this plan back to the drawing board. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Richard. And next, who signed up was Jeffrey Heesaker. Is Jeffrey there? I think I see a light lighting up. Audio on. Yep. Gotcha. All right. And then state your name and address, Jeff. Oh, I don't think your audio is on.
Let's try that. Is that better?
There we go.
Okay, now you can see my ugly face and everything else. And hopefully Matt can help me with some of the pictures that I need to be put up that were in my submittal. And I hope that he can bring that up and show everybody what I'm talking about in the proposal. First of all, I state my name again. My name is Jeff Heesaker. I live at three twenty Washington Street. I live in within the Montefiore National Historic Register District. I moved into my residence in May of twenty eighteen. I live in a peaceful downtown district that was being revised and is still is being revised this date. Reason why we're here today is the the appeal of I H four dash twenty. This is a historic review of the three-story proposal at five twenty-five and five thirty-three Cala Puya, which has already been stated. What I like to do is if Mark can, I mean, excuse me, Matt can bring up the, the, my picture of the previous, what was there, the three historic homes in my packet that I sent?
Is that, is that in your part of the public comment?
Yes, it's in part of my public comment.
Okay.
This is Laura LaRocque. We're taking a look at the council packets that were posted to the city website. It appears that it would have been out in the first batch. There's a bookmark and the bookmarks show testimony by name. Could refer to those documents. It should thank you too.
Okay, it's loading. And then I'll share it to the screen. Sorry.
That's okay.
And now it's downloading. Laura, do you have a page number on that? Maybe I can just skip to the page number.
It's the first page.
The very first page of it?
Yeah, very first page.
Well, no, it's part of a larger packet.
We're looking, Matt, we're looking at bookmarks right now. Take just a moment.
Hold on. I've got it pulled up now.
There it is. Towards the middle.
Okay. Let's see.
Looks like, starting on page eleven of the first testimony batch that went out.
Yep, got it. One second and then I'll share.
There's also another submittal that is further down on the agenda packet.
All right, I think I got it. Okay. There we go.
That's good. Thank you. This is what the, this is what was being respectively tore down that was there when I moved in. And these is what the pictures looked like when I moved in in similar size and scale. And I wanted to bring this to the city council. This is what it looked like. Like I said before, the, the, so when I moved in, this is the size and scale I was looking at. So I want to go downtown and I'm going to go think the, so what I'm saying is that the being proposed in the downtown district may meet some of the criteria, but it doesn't meet all the criteria. And that's what Laura has proposed is some of the stuff that is being done in the review. And I also want to reemphasize that the landmarks decision for denial of the application of the described thing was correct in its decision for the Albany Development Code. And those comments are, I have placed also into, into the criteria and the record that the counselors can look at and also review and read, please. And you are the judges and you are judging this project. There's several things that come in mind about the subject probably did not match the drawings at the last year, public hearing. And I wanted to share that with the counselors that there was several different design pictures, whatever you want to call them. One showed the parking of four vehicles, another one showed a parking of six vehicles. So that was what was being shown to things. So the, the, we're getting two different versions of what, what that proposal would look like over here in this neighborhood. And going back and going forward to this point, I like to share some of the things about my new construction criteria objections. The development must contain some of the underlying developed patterns such as street sidewalks, building coverage, and orientation of the street, which we've already discussed a little bit of it about. And part of that is, it is true that some of the building setbacks, but his setbacks are not compatible with the district, but not nearly enough for the surrounding areas. There are two different, two structures. Excuse me. Sorry, his setbacks in building one is not compatible with the district. May, excuse me, not, not nearly enough by the surrounding areas for what it, what it was when the other two structures were there. So the setbacks, what I'm saying is that they were setbacks already on that lot with those three houses. They already had their current setbacks. And his building does not mimic those setbacks that were on that lot. And hopefully that somebody would understand that. And I'm not sure if I can say it any clearer that the setbacks were there. Now his setbacks are going to be different than those, those setbacks were with those three houses that were there. And so going, and then now I want to go in with the, the building coverage is, is not compatible with the surrounding area where the mass of the structure outweighs the ground, outweighs the ground coverage of the lot. This, this building is three stories, forty feet, ten inches tall. So when collectively all three floors are considered mass, the masses, this mass is collectively more than most historic, is the most in this historic district. The proposed parking structure, like I said before, was two different concepts that were in the previous public hearing. And that was in the public. You guys have that too, reviewing that, if you reviewed the public hearing. So also then I want also to clarify that the structure is, should be of the similar size and scale of the surrounding buildings as much as possible and reflects the craftsmanship of those buildings. As you can pretty well tell from some of the pictures that I'm I'm trying to show pictures of my house that did come up in the alleyway and stuff. And it, and it clearly doesn't show that. The drawing says, from the thing is, is it's, it's basically is not of the similar size of the surrounding scale. Can you bring up the pictures of the three twenty that I have titled three twenty, Washington, Washington, it should be in Washington, in the alleyway to the development pictures? This is a representative drawing of the two proposed buildings. And these are the old fashioned way architects used to do long ago when they didn't have the digital enhancements as they do today. They, they showed the size of the building next, next to the three structures, that three eighteen Washington Street, which is my, which is next door to me, I'm three eighteen Washington. And the one on, I believe it's one that's facing to Cala Puya Street. Those two drawings are showing, showing those next to our buildings on this block. So it kind of gives you a visual representation of the size, scale, and mass of these buildings. And to be another, and to be another compatibility to those is I would compare it to City Hall. And I think our counselors have all been to City Hall, I hope so, has walked into City Hall and seen how tall City Hall is. These, these buildings are taller than City Hall. And I would, these are way massive. Like I said, these are taller than City Hall and in size and scale and mass. And I believe Laura also had that picture of that that was submitted later that came into effect. And I'm pretty sure that if the counselors can see that, they would get a sense of what City Hall looks like and then what, how, what size this building looks like. Next to my, I wouldn't call it a tiny house, but I would call it a standard for the time in the nineteen thirties, a two-bedroom, one-bath house. And going on to the thing is I hope that I can bring some clarity to this too, that there is, there is at least one building, it's called the Fort Miller Building, that is in the, in the neighborhood. And if you can bring that up too, there's, there's the Fort Miller Building that everybody recognizes, I hope. They got redone not too long ago and, and was compatible in the neighborhood. If you look at the, the size in the proposal next to it, is the library. And those two are actually compatible. I understand one's in the district, one is not, but this is a mixed-use structure. The Fort Miller Building is clearly a of socks of the same size and similar shape as, as the, as the library was in. That's what I want to do. I make sure you clarify that. And then going to the next picture down below, it is the back of the picture of the Fort Miller Building. And I'm not sure Laura was looking to look at to see if the back parking structure was added to the Fort Miller Building or I'm not sure if it was added or if it was currently there and they just remodeled it and put four parking structures in the back. Can Laura verify that for me, please?
Yeah, I don't have the documentation to say specifically when they were constructed, unfortunately. I don't think they're original. They're added on at some point. I just don't know the date of that.
Okay, that is, that's what I'm looking for is to see, I understand that now that they were added, but you can still see that they added it when, whenever. But they, they've also have the parking structure there for parking. And it is complimentary to the, to the library building. It's a similar size and scale when they added on to the, to the building. They made a deck out of it and everything else on the back. So that's what I'm talking about, some similar size and scale that are in, it's right next to each other. And I understand the code is very vague of how far or what distance that is. And it's sad to see that we have vagueness in the rules where it should have said, hey, same block, same within five hundred feet, a thousand feet, ten thousand feet, one mile, half mile, et cetera, in the, for the, for the neighborhood. But our historic districts are our historic districts. So, and I'm going to go to the next one, my next picture. Going back to reiterating, this is where the site development is in the third picture here. And you clearly see if the proposal was to be submitted as is, it would really be more towering over the whole, I would say, within the block structure itself. So the building and the craftsmanship should, should also be reflective. And in those, in the thing, in the photos too. But what I'm showing is, is this is where the neighborhood is. Not, not, not five blocks away, not ten blocks away. But this is ground zero, right where exactly this building is going to go. And I'm showing that to the counselors. Okay, the other thing too is that the building, the buildings must reflect. Must reflect the craftsmanship of those buildings in the neighborhood, as you can see that the neighborhood, here's the neighborhood. And does his. His craftsmanship. Uh. Uh, it reflects the code as as much as possible. But there's the pamphlet for new construction guidelines. That is in the counselor's packet and they how they probably, I hope they have seen it and read it and judged. For their self of how tall the building is and their mass and the size and the scale. That I'm trying to bring up here in the reflection of these pictures. Um, the next picture going down shows the picture of the alleyway. Where my house sits, the uh, the house. I believe it's towards I'd say to for City Hall, that one has a a basement and two and a half stories also like the one. Directly on the other end of the alleyway and ours happens, mine happens to be the second in the outside by side. And the next picture shows the actual front of the next of the other house that is in front of it. And so clearly, the Edward Jones Building. And the other, the the building you're seeing there is is comparable in size. I mean, it doesn't reflect some of it. Only one that comes closest to a mixed use building in the in in our district. And scrolling down to the pictures, well, the next picture will show you the the picture on. Uh, on Calipoya in the in the alleyway. Coming down the next one. And I'm just showing you all the buildings that are in the neighborhood. And there's the the next picture is the uh, the commercial State Farm Building is on the corner. So this is what this is what the neighborhood looks like, same way with the next picture is Fisher Funeral Home. On picture on Third and Washington. And then the other one is on on uh, third, no, excuse me, fourth in Calipoya. That will show that one that has been presented also once before in in documentations. And I'm also showing you what what the compatibility of of the proposed, uh, this is a repurposed of Third Street. Which has been repurposed and I understand those people live across from the the five story tower. But it's in in the historic district and it should reflect what's in the historic district, not what's outside the district. And that's what I'm kind of showing here, what what all the neighborhood looks like. And and to 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 get that same uh, sense of uh, craftsmanship and development. And referring to the setbacks, all the repurposed buildings on Third have setbacks. My building has setbacks, um, the ones on Fourth Street have setbacks also. So all buildings in the neighborhood have setbacks, but he's asking for different, he's asking for no setbacks. So when I'm looking at the neighborhood. It you you have to have some some kind of setbacks or they don't or they look exactly this. They're not supposed to look exactly, but be compatible with the neighborhood. So then the next next one I want to go to is um. Is a mixed use building also in the in the neighborhood and this shows. The um, the massage works on building there um, that. That a a house can be turned into a a business and also a living structure. So if even if you built a house, you could do something like this. Put a standard house in there and have. A a small shop within that house, so it would more reflect the neighborhood. Because the district is full of of single family homes and I understand we're looking at mixed use. In our zone, but this is a mixed use building if you if you do the old style craftsmanship building. So so that's kind of what I'm looking at is is for what a mixed use building looks like in in the neighborhood. The Fort Miller Building and the other the other massage place. And I'm saying, oops, I'm still going, I got a little bit more. To to um, thing, but most of all, we're looking for the characteristics of the of the of the neighborhood. And what I want to set forth is is that he's the applicant. Is um, is reflective of him, he is he is um, done his um, resume. And this is his resume out here in the public and what I like to share is is the um. Is the uh, um, some of his previous works, which he hasn't boasted on, I mean, if I'm showing my resume. I would reflect on something else that I have done in the same similar fashion in in our um, in our town. And what I'm saying is is that the applicant has redid repurposed nine oh four Fourth Avenue. In the uh, in in his line of work, so I would like to bring those up to the screen right now. And and see, this is this is his resume. That I'm showing, I'm showing that if if truly he his work was. Complimentary to the neighborhood, this is this is showing something that's really not complimentary to the neighborhood. If you look at the proposal on these of these of the my pictures here. Um, this is the duplex on nine oh four North and two oh seven Madison. If you look at those very carefully, they're showing brick facade all in the front. And. What I'm looking to is I'm doing, this is a forthcoming to it to the uh, to to the city council. Say, is this is this compatible? He's trying to trying to make something that's compatible in our neighborhood. Well, I want to see what he made compatible to the other neighborhood. This is, this is, this is, I believe, is not compatible with that neighborhood. And if you screen down to the next, the next shot, the next thing, this is his building.
Mayor.
Yeah, uh huh.
I don't see where this has anything to do with the process that we're going through right now, this is completely outside of the. Of the uh, of what we're talking about, in my opinion. And I think at the beginning of the meeting, we talked about to bring up things that are different. And all of the stuff that we're going over is in our packet, we've had time to review and and read and I don't see where. Um, anybody's adding anything new to the conversation and especially when we start. Going outside the other work that somebody else has done, I I find that kind of offensive.
This is his work, I'm saying this is his resume, I'm trying to say that's the what I'm trying to present is he is here to represent himself. And if I'm showing something that it that he has done in the past to to make it complimentary. To the project that he is.
Okay. You know, we've let uh, the applicant speak, the attorney and and the builder and uh. The architect uh, without time limit. So on one hand, I'm willing to let. The other people talk as well, but Mike makes a good point, this gentleman. Just going on and on and on and a lot of the information is not pertinent. Thank you, your honor, that looking at the time, uh, and there's probably a lot of people who want to speak, we need to try and implement some kind of an unreasonable time limit.
So so Jeff, can you, um, we did review, do you have anything different that um, you wanted to bring forward that? Not already in your testimony that was submitted in our.
Yes, um, what I'm doing is if you enact this proposal as it speaks and as it sits. I have to redo my windows in my house, I want to find out if I can use the same materials he is using in his building. At this particular time without going through. City Council, review, historic review and all this other stuff, that's what I'm going to find out is if. If if he does his proposal, which is as written in in the packet, it it his packet claims that he is. Having, you know, smooth finish, um, powder coated, um, iron works, um. Buildings building materials that are not suitable that I was told that I couldn't use, I want to find out if. If I could use those same materials.
Mm hmm, okay.
That's that's my, that's one of my points is is it is if he should be able to use different materials than I am required to do. Then I I am in dire need of say, I would like to use the same compatibility materials. And do the same compatibility.
Okay, all right, is that it, Jeff?
That's it, besides you can read my packet, thank you.
Um, so we have four more other people to speak, but I think we'll have a counselor wanting to take a a quick break. And so if we can just take a two minute break here, folks, and then we have four others that testified. And anybody else that wants to testify to, um, you have that opportunity, but counsel do remember we are land use regulations. Laws, we have to listen to both sides, so on that, okay, two minutes, thank you.
Sharon, I'd like to speak as soon as everyone's back.
Okay, I think we're missing Dick. And um. Let's see, Rich. Now it's okay, one, two. Yeah, just missing Dick. Okay, we're just missing Dick yet. Dick, can you hear me? Dick, are you there?
Now we have, well, now we have the picture and no dick.
Call him on the phone.
Oh, well, he doesn't have anymore to go take the dog out.
Well, that's what I was thinking, they went out to walk the dog, oh, there he is.
Okay, all right, we're back from our recess, so what do you want to say, Dale?
Well, right before a break, you said, remember it's land use, so we need to listen to everybody and I don't think your comment was directed to me. But just to clarify exactly what I said, uh, we gave the attorney and the applicant and the architect. You know, plenty of time to speak without a time limit and I want to listen to all sides and I I I'm not proposing a time limit. But I I would like to see that the comments just be pertinent to the issue. Um, it doesn't even have to be new information, the information from the attorney was not new, it was submitted earlier and I had read it. So that's clarification.
Yep, thank you, thank you, okay, so next on the list that signed up was Sergio Cano Soto. Or they on.
Me.
Okay, hello.
Hello.
Sure we've been able to see the whole time, so.
Is there a way I can show my screen?
Um, yes, and if you can state your name, um, spell your last name and then furnish your address.
Yes, so my name is Sergio Cano Soto. Uh, I'm a resident in fourteen twenty five Calipoya uh, Street. And just tell me walking from the site, um, and yeah, I would like to speak in favor of this project.
Okay.
And you see my window?
Um, yes, we do, thank you.
Okay, perfect, so. Um, I've been listening to a lot of opinions here tonight and this has been really enriching, many of them. Uh, I would like to bring a different angle is intent versus impact is what I call. So the 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 commission wants to keep certain cohesion in how how the shapes and sizes and all that. But we need to focus also in the consequences of our decisions. Decisions have impacts on people and sometimes those impacts are more important than a difference in a couple of feet in height. That when we when we talk about history, we don't know what what the other surrounding buildings are going to be in the future anyway, so. Uh, it's and it's very subjective, I I really liked tall buildings, I've been growing in Europe, I'm used to tall buildings, I think they create a. Perfect sense of place and and really pleasant and for for our downtown. So some people might think one thing or the other. But consequences are real and we're having a problem with equity in access to housing in in the United States in general, but in Albany in particular. And that creates inequalities and segregation in our city. And those issues have to be with. Single family home zoning with parking minimums with setbacks, all those seems aesthetics. But at the end, they drive people out of the places where we would like them to leave, especially young people, minorities. Um, and we can see here in the next slide, I think, no. This is what I'm explaining, uh, that we use it for segregation, not because we want to segregate, but because of the decision have consequences. And they are keeping people out of downtown, people cannot leave, they're all aging and nothing wrong about that. But a diverse society has better outcomes for everyone, it keeps our schools alive, it keeps young people. It keeps children, it's good for business, it's good for everyone. So this is a a key question is, uh, we will be discussing these buildings height if it were a single house. Just a couple of feet lower, if it was one of these house with a dormer or something that will be a bit higher. I don't think we will be, we will be discussing this, so at the end, sorry. And I wanted to show you this is two thousand ten data, so nowadays. And I wanted to show you this, it's 2010 data, so nowadays it's going to be different for sure, but I don't think it's going to be too different from this. We can see how in the historic area, there are basically no diversity. And we see clusters of housing, especially for Latinos, because we don't have a lot of blacks in our town. And if we could see these dots by economic diversity, it would be clear that most of the area here is wealthy white people living here, right? Not Latinos living here, not middle income, not young couples coming to trying to have their first house. It is where we're gatekeeping people from living downtown, right? Then about some concept about aesthetics, like setbacks that some people love here, I don't know why, they don't create a sense of place, they just make things more open for no reason. What do create a sense of place? Proportions, like this is downtown Boston. I don't know where you prefer to live, I do, I don't know where I would prefer to live. This is the same street, just photoshopped, so you see this is the actual street, and this is the same street just with the street like narrower. And you can see how it creates a sense of place and enclosure, coziness, if you may, right? Just making streets, and this is what this building would create, it will create a sense that you are in a place where there's actually something going on, not just a quiet neighborhood. That is also good, I mean. This is Amsterdam, this is my little toddler coming. Going to bed.
You know, what I'm seeing, your presentation would really well fit for development code changes, kind of doing comparisons. Is your presentation going to pertain to this actual site?
Yeah, I'm just finishing, I'm just finishing right now, I'm not going to be longer.
Yeah. Wanted to pertain to the application, yeah.
Yes, so talking about application, we talked about also setbacks. This is another sample of setback. Comparing to a corner store, so the applicant is proposing mixed zoning commercial. This could be a reality in our neighborhood that turned to what we have right now in Albany, where downtown Albany, where we don't, we have no chance to go shop by food, by walking. We live in a food desert, and I really wish we had a grocery store in our downtown. So in short, I would really love this project to go through, I think a couple of feet further is not going to change our world, but it's going to bring eight, I don't know how many, but it's eight new families to our downtown that will be able to have a home here, and would increase diversity, economic diversity especially in an area, and will improve business in downtown for people that would live there, wouldn't need to get their car to go everywhere, which is fantastic, and I think it's great. So thank you to the developer for not only trying to to earn money with a project, but also trying to do the right thing, and I'm really grateful for this and the architect as well. Thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you, great presentation slides, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Krista Wallace, she's still on. Krista? Do you see those initials at all, Matt?
No, I don't see her on.
Okay, I think she was earlier. And then David Abar?
Anybody.
I think David was on.
Yeah, David's here, I think.
Yeah, David?
Hi, David Abar, A B A R R, 625 Port Avenue Southeast Albany. How is everybody doing?
Yeah.
So I'm going to make it short and sweet. At the very beginning of this present, where you've got the mixed use that's now allowed, and just a very small couple properties and blocks where it overlaps. So the problem with that is that those just few properties that overlap is where the the historic Albany Code requires the historic code be the precedent for it, meaning that that takes over from the mixed use. So then if you look at your packet on page 29, it gives examples of of what, it says this, not that, and literally what you're asking to get approved would be the not this picture on page 30, where you've got a big massive building, three stories high, there's no breakup of roof line. And what in the picture shows a two-story building, that's just single-family houses. But I think what Jeff was saying earlier is a good example, where the Fort Miller Building is a good example of scale and a mixed use, that not being new construction, but it was completely revamped, and the job was done really, really well. So I think the biggest problem is the scale of the property, and really, it's obvious that they're just trying to squeeze as much square foot onto this lot to make it, you know, more profitable, and you know, I don't blame the guy, but without any, you know, if you look at the other buildings that are just as tall, or they're comparing it to, there's roof line changes in it, so that the scale is more subdued versus a three-story building, literally a brick wall all the way up to the third story. If you look at Jeff's picture that he presented earlier of the alley, where all those single-family houses, you're going to end up with that, if you look at that block, which is within the district, you're going to have this massive thing, if you can remember back on the New Yorker cartoon, probably from the 60s, where somebody didn't want to sell, and they built skyscrapers around the building, pretty famous New Yorker cartoon, that's what it's going to look like. So that alone doesn't allow it to be approved recently. So that's essentially all I have to say. I think Bill's comment on, you know, I'm not going to go in the kitchen and tell Cibrus how to make their meal, well, they're not required by the Albany Code what they can and can't do, or in this instance, they, you know, this is before you, is a code issue. And then some of the pictures and references to stuff being pointed out in the district is, within the district, there's contributing and non-contributing buildings. A lot of those buildings were probably built old houses that burnt down, and they put up a duplex pre-1979, they obviously weren't approved, because the district wasn't created then. So you can't really point out like, whoa, look at this, they built this, you know, 50s or 60s or 70s looking duplex. It's not contributing, if you go to the roles of the houses in the listings, it'll tell you if a property is contributing or not contributing, and I'm not sure if everybody understands that. So really, it is within, it's on the overlay. The district requirements are are what you should be looking at first, and within the guidelines it shows, you know, do this, not this, and you're asking them to do not this picture, so anyway, that's all I got, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you David. And
Excuse me?
Yeah.
No, this is Mary McLean, we were, we asked to testify today, and apparently we didn't get on the list. Are we still able to do that?
Yep, let me just finish the list, all's I have is Bernadette, but I don't think, I don't see her there. So with that, I was going to ask if there was others, so yes, go ahead and proceed, and what is, just make sure you say your name and address.
My name's Mary McLean, I live at 515 4th Avenue Southwest, so I'll be right next door to the proposed buildings. So I have a 900 square foot house that stands less than 14 feet high, and his proposed structure will be about eight feet from my house, and he proposes to be 40 feet high. So he is nearly 30 feet taller than me, eight feet away from me, and so that was one of my concerns. And also, I wanted to talk about what Bill Cluse was saying, that there was only the one house with a 10-foot setback on Cala Puya Streets, and he was claiming that that does not set a precedence or a pattern, since there's only one house. But I live in this neighborhood, I've walked the neighborhood, all of the houses along Cala Puya Streets are at least five to 10 feet back. The house directly across 4th Avenue from the proposed sites is on the corner of 4th and Cala Puya also, it's on the south corner, and it is probably 10 feet from Cala Puya, and at least 10 feet back from 4th Street. So if he's truly looking at the setbacks in the neighborhood, there is a pattern. So for Bill Cluse to claim that there is no pattern, that is inaccurate. And then when Mark Signer was showing his slides, he kept saying, well, look at the mass and scale of these buildings in the neighborhood, and every house he showed was two full stories with a half-story on top, so it was not a true three-story building. It was a two-and-a-half-story building, and every picture he showed, that he claimed they were three-story buildings like his, were actually two-and-a-half stories, they were two full stories with a story, an attic story with dormers. So he, his evidence actually contradicts what his claim is right there, that, you know, his evidence actually supports that his buildings need to be that the 40-foot suggested height is too high. The only building he showed that's higher is the church, and yeah, the church spire is going to be higher than his apartment building. Yes, that's, that's a given, sorry. I agree with the neighbor who spoke that was saying that we do want to have apartments here, we do want to bring more families to the neighborhood, we want to make it a walking neighborhood, we want to bring money to this area close to the downtown, absolutely, I agree with all that. But I think we can do it in a respectful way to the historic district, and not make some cracker box building and stick it in there and stuff as many people in there as possible. So I think we can, he can have his mixed-use buildings, he can have his apartments, he just needs to look at the drawing board again, and make something that is more compatible with the mass and scale of the houses that exist in the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you Mary, and if there was anybody else that wanted to speak, either for or against the application, and if so, then you'll need to turn your microphone on.
Mayor Canopa, this is Cameron, I was signed up to speak, but somehow wasn't included on the list.
I did not get that sent to me on the list, but yes, go ahead Cameron, and then name and address.
My name is Cameron Settlemeyer, S E T T L E M I E R, I live at 2307th Avenue Southwest in the Montis Historic District. And can I get a share screen, please?
Yes.
Yes, just a second. There you go. Hey, hopefully you can see that. As a resident homeowner in the Montis National Historic District, I'm against the proposal in case file HI 0420. Following the explanations given in the Guidelines for New Construction in Albany's Residential Historic Districts and Neighborhoods, sorry, on page 27 of the agenda packet, it is clear that the proposal does not meet any of the requirements in Albany Development Code 7.270. Earlier, it was asked what surrounding buildings mean, and the guidelines in your packet, which I'm showing here, help clarify that. We look at the scale and proportion, it says, new buildings should relate in scale and proportions to adjacent historic buildings. When you look at the heights, it says, building height should be within the range of heights of area buildings, step larger buildings down to smaller buildings. So in this case, we have one house that's two stories directly to the north abutting, and we have two houses that are abutting directly to the east that are only a single story. So the guidelines actually recommend that the heights is no more than a two-story house on Cala Puya to the north, and ideally between the heights of those two buildings, the one to the north and the two on the east side. Criteria 2 says, the structure is of similar size and scale, surrounding buildings as much as possible reflects the craftsmanship of those buildings. Proposed structures are not close to the size, scale, or form of surrounding buildings. They're so out of scale, shaving a few feet here or there will not help. It is completely unbalanced with the abutting properties. Roof peak height of 40 feet 10 inches towers over the neighborhood. Using a drone, I measured the heights of surrounding buildings, and one-story structures range from 14 to 18 feet, and two-story structures range from 26 to 30 feet to the main roof. Per the applicant's own words, the original historic structures on this property were 28 feet high. To get a real sense of the heights, I put my drone 41 feet in the air, the same height as the proposed roof peak of Building 1 and Building 2. At this height, the drone is above all other surrounding buildings. It overlooks the Fisher Funeral Home in Washington, the Fort Miller Funeral Home, and the downtown library. It even overlooks most of the urban canopy, it dominates. So this is showing from the sidewalk on 4th, looking at the two single-story houses that are abutting the property on the east side. And you can see how you're looking, what appears to be almost straight down on them, because the height disparity is so great between the proposed buildings and the abutting historic structures. This photo is taken from the corner of 4th and Cala Puya, and it is looking down 4th to the east. And again, you can see how it's taller than the other buildings. It's actually taller than the Fisher Funeral Home, it's taller than the Fort Miller Funeral Home. If we zoom in, you can see it looks over the top of the library, and it even looks over the top of City Hall. If you look to the southeast, again, it's over the top of all the surrounding historic properties in the district. The only building, the only historic building in the historic district that's taller is White Spires, and that's an unoccupied steeple, which is not a comparable building. You look to the southwest, again, you're looking over the top of all of the buildings, whether they're adjacent, surrounding, or off in a distance, you're looking at the treetops of these buildings, it's way above everything. Looking due west, if you look at the buildings that are across the street, you're looking down on their roof peaks. The three-story commercial structure is way taller than the two stories opposite the street. And looking to the north, again, it dominates over the top of the abutting historic property on Cala Puya Street. The only building that's taller is the building that's out of district and is not comparable. When my drone was 41 feet in the air, pointed it up to the neighbors showing the height of the new building, and they were shocked and dismayed. Now, there's a little bit of irony in showing you these pictures. The irony is that if these complexes were built as proposed, I couldn't even take these shots, because the drone would crash into the awning or eaves of the building protruding into the right-of-way, the public right-of-way over the sidewalk. If you look at the design guidelines, it shows the awnings going into the public right-of-way. It shows the eaves of this building going into the public right-of-way, both on Cala Puya and on 4th Avenue. There was something else, good sense of unifying development patterns for setbacks, but that's not really the complete story. If we look at the history of this parcel, we know what the history is, and we know what the general setbacks of the buildings, the historic buildings that were, and we can see that the setbacks of this property and we can see that the setbacks of this property historically matched the house on Kalapuya that's still there, that we had matching setbacks. 15 feet on Kalapuya is the matching setback. That's the underlying development path that used to be there on Fourth Avenue. And again, the setback to the main facade is approximately 11 feet and about five feet to the porch, which is what the setback is for the other historic property of 515 Fourth Avenue. There is one other piece of property on Fourth Avenue on the corner of Fourth and Washington. However, that property is not historic. It is out of the period of significance and should not be used as an example because it's not one of the historic unifying development patterns. It was, uh, built, um, outside of the scope of the period. So in conclusion, any conditions of approval would be so drastic that our new review based on revised plans is needed. And I urge you to deny HI 0420 outright. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Cameron. And is there anyone else that would like to speak in for or against this application?
Hi, uh, am I, hey, go, uh, so my name's Stephanie Newton. And, uh, so I live actually in the house that Tina Signer grew up in for quite a little time. And I actually consider, uh, Margantina friends of mine. And I've seen, they did done some great work on some homes in our neighborhood. One just down on Fifth, and they're working on a house down on Fourth and Vine. They do excellent work on the historic homes. Um, amount of revenue that comes into, um, Albany due to, um, the, the intactness of our historic neighborhoods. Uh, I live downtown and I have literally people that take pictures of my house, my house, and, you know, pre-COVID, obviously. Um, but I'm, I'm wondering, like, I know that, you know, while Margantina would do a beautiful job on whatever project they're doing, if this would then set a precedent, if it wasn't exactly to happening in the future, which then might have, and this is all a lot of, you know, might have. Um, but it could potentially maybe allow for other modern-style buildings that could potentially detract from the intactness of our historic neighborhoods, which could then potentially have an impact on tourists. Uh, and I haven't heard that. It's just something I started thinking about, um, this evening. And I haven't heard anything addressed. Granted, I joined a little late. I was putting a little girly my, uh, daughter to bed. But so I, it's not really a, a for or against. It's a, have we thought about that? Or how, how this would change any projects moving forward?
Okay. All right. Thanks, Steph. Is there anyone else that wanted to testify? Okay. Anybody who's not hearing anything? Okay. I think.
I was gonna add something. Good.
Oh, yes?
Um, the clear view right-of-way on Fourth and Kalapuya, you're, there's no clear, uh, clear vision area if you're driving in his drawings.
I can't tell who's speaking. Who's, who's speaking? You need to identify yourself.
I'm Jeff Heasacker.
Oh, Jeff.
I want to add, uh, I wanted to add that in his drawings, if you cannot see the clear view right-of-way, if you're on Fourth and Kalapuya with his drawings.
Uh-huh. Okay. All right.
So if you're driving on, on Fourth, you could get, you know, somebody could run the stop sign at, at, uh, on Kalapuya and run into you if you, if you, if you put that building up. Sorry. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, anyone else that was wanting to testify? Okay. All right. With that, um, does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony?
Uh, this is Bill Close signing again. Um, hopefully you have a picture and sound there. Um, I just, I'm gonna wrap this up very quickly, uh, just a couple of points. Um, with respect to the comments that we were maxing out the development. In fact, I don't believe we've maxed out the height and I don't believe we've maxed out the square footage. I wanted to be sure that, uh, which were submitted today by the architect. They should be in your packet of materials that you got today under staff. Um, I just don't want those to be hanging out there as orphans that, uh, don't get the, um, attention that Steph says they deserve and therefore they aren't approved as part of this, uh, budget proposal. Um, and I, I think my fine, final comment is just a reminder that, um, this really is a contest between, uh, competing design views. It's the architect's design versus the staff's, um, preferences about aspects of the design. And, um, you know, uh, staff has said you have authority to approve this, approve the conditions or deny it. Um, uh, so we, we are all, the competing designs are all in your hands. Uh, the only, um, the only added comment I would make with respect to the eating designs is that we, um, we went to great pains to look at the language of the actual conditions and actual standards in the code and point out how staff's recommendations to you and their critique of our proposal is really based on, uh, misunderstanding of what the, uh, code standard says on its face. I, I don't know why that's so, but I think, uh, uh, that's a fair criticism that we developed at great length in my letter. And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um.
I, I, uh.
Oh, go ahead, Mark. Yeah.
I have a couple to say, just super brief, uh, you know, we're being compared strictly to residential project. This is not strictly a residential project. We're trying to fit into what is more of a commercial zone than residential zone. And, uh, so meeting that criteria is more restrictive in the historic district. And we are under those height restrictions. When we are within those horizontal restrictions, which are nothing, you know. So we're a big building because of, uh, commercial space. And then, uh, you know, so, and just because you have your house doesn't mean that, uh, our building's gonna look like yours. It's just not trying to be a new building or a historic building. We're not trying to, uh, look like your house. We're trying to fit into a downtown mixed-use zone that encourages people to be able to walk to it, the downtown, brings them downtown. You know, I mean, I kind of wanted to give Sergio a kiss there. I met the guy, but he just is intelligent and I thought, well spoken. I appreciate it. I appreciate all your comments. So, you know, that's what I have to say.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mark. And that is for the applicant.
Um, I would like the most recent one. I just want to correct a couple of things. He, he mentioned that, uh, we're supposed to be compatible with adjacent historic homes. And the home he talks about is, uh, actually non-contributing. It's about 900 square feet. And he flew his drone up to 44 feet, which is four feet above our building. And, uh, what, 20 feet above the third floor. The third floor of our building is 14 feet. It, I mean, was 24 feet. It's 14 feet to the second floor and 24 feet to the next floor. And he's showing us drone pictures as if he was Mary Poppins suspended above the roof. Uh, I think that's sort of disingenuous. Um, and, uh, I know it's late. Uh, if, if anyone, I, I can show everyone the model real quickly and take you through the building uh, in real time and show you what it actually looks like in 3D if anyone's interested. If not, I'm tired like everyone else and I'm ready to, I mean, I think we've said what we need to say. I, I, I guarantee you, when these are built, people are gonna walk up there and go, I thought these were big buildings. They are not big buildings. They're 30 by 50. They're, they're, the actual lot coverage of buildings is almost exactly what was there before. We have just created, we just made it a little more dense so we could create outside space for people. I mean, here we're going through COVID and I'm trying to create space in the backyard so people who live there won't have a heavy impact on the neighborhood. So people can have reasonable, wonderful lives and we can bring people downtown and, and show them the respect. And quite frankly, the, the, uh, make Albany moving forward with their history instead of trying to freeze it at some point in time. And this is also the vision that goes back to Helen Burns and to Don Donovan. It's Village Center. It's a walkable town. This is the first client to come along in 24 years that actually is willing to take on this kind of mixed-use development. And I, for one, am proud of Mark. Uh, this is not a guaranteed winner. It's absolutely not the case. He's trying to do something good for this community and I believe this is something good for the community.
So, so Bill, I have a question then. So how many bedrooms total is there proposed?
So there, there are four per unit, eight two-bedroom apartments. So, so there are eight, eight apartments.
Okay. So, and there's four parking spaces. Is that right?
Yeah, we're not required to have any. I'd like to put six back there. There was a thing about four versus six. But if we go to six, the development code then triggers and we're required to have setbacks and, and tree islands. And so, uh, if you want to impose a condition that says, hey, you can park six cars back there. We, one of them would have to be handicapped and we don't have to put in tree islands and all this stuff. That would be great. We would like, we would really are clear and objective. Uh, unfortunately, a lot of what we deal with on landmarks is unclear and subjective. And the idea that unclear, subjective rules should override clear and objective law is just
Total. So eight apartments, which if you have one car per apartment, and then what about commercial? How, how
That's right.
Space for parking?
Well, I don't want to speak for the gentleman before, but he is very, basically not going to get people living downtown or you're gonna have large islands of parking. The city needs a parking garage and, but that should not, I mean, you've done a parking study. The parking study said, well, you don't need parking problem now, but if you bring people downtown, you will have a parking problem. And the city should look at a parking structure to take care of people living downtown. You just can't have it both ways. And you can't, uh, take a district where you've already agreed and, and your law says that we required no parking. Um, and we've gone above and beyond. Uh, the storage units aren't required of any, and the outdoor area is not required. Sharon, you know, the multifamily code, uh, very, uh, detailed to a very detailed level. We're only eight units. We don't trigger all the things we've provided. We provide outdoor space. We're providing, uh, storage units. None of those are required. We're going above and beyond in every respect. And the, the building is not up to the zero property line. The front doors are, are five feet back. And then there's three feet on the others. And then there's an overhang that does come up to create scale and livability. These building
I, I mean, I, I know, I can guarantee there will be concerns over parking. So, um, but, and
Yeah, I, I have those concerns too.
When it comes to apartments, you have to have at least one parking space per one-bedroom apartment. So, uh,
Not here.
So, okay. Um, so with that, um, um, does this, any staff member respond to any test we presented? Laura? Laura? Whoops, we lost her camera. Did we lose ya? What about David? Is he on? Any staff?
Laura's sitting. I'm looking right at Laura right now.
Yeah, so am I.
Yeah, but her, her frame looks frozen though, I'm afraid.
Sure. Yeah.
David Thing, if like, maybe Laura is able to reboot here and join us in a minute. Um, as far as the accessory buildings issue, that's on, um, page three of, uh, Bill Close's, uh, letter to you today. Uh, it refers to the accessory buildings, uh, full review by the landmarks with a new 8,572 application fee. It's not necessary. Um, the historic review for something like accessory buildings, um, is actually $46. It's not $8,572.
Okay. All right. Thank you, David, for clarifying.
Call in, we're ready to call.
Did Laura get back yet? Must not. I've been kicked off on my, I, my laptop three times tonight. So she's probably dealing with the same thing, um, losing Wi-Fi. Okay.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound.
Okay. Um, does anyone have a question they would like to raise at this time?
To enable audio control, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not have a PIN, just press pound or hash.
You think that's Laura trying to come back on?
I do think so. Um,
Yeah, it was through, that was Ann Catlin's connection picking up.
Okay.
Side by side there, so.
Oh, okay. Um, okay. Seeing that, then, um, with that, I will close the public hearing at 10:03 PM. And counsel, um, you do have, do you have questions of staff? What would you like? Anyone have any questions, any comments? Um, you do have some motions. And let me find the pages.
Yeah, Your Honor?
Your motions are on page, um, 24. Yeah, Bessie?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, our, our goal in the downtown was to, you know, bring activity uh, and businesses down there. And I think this project does that. It sounds to me that it does meet code. I, I really don't like the idea of people attacking, um, you know, a person for what they do uh, and bringing up things that happened in the past. I mean, I, uh, Bill Riles is a respected architect and anything that he's done for the city has always come out well. And I, uh, and, and the Signers are the same way. Um, I trust them. I mean, I like the looks of this and I think it's gonna be interesting because you have the business on the bottom. The, what we need is the apartments at top. And I, I just think it's a, a win-win for the downtown area. Thank you.
Okay. Counselors, Dick?
I, uh, I have reservations about this. I, um, I think back to when we bought, um, uh, my house here on Broad Alvin Street. And, uh, the neighbor across the hood bought the house across the street not too long before we bought this house. He never said anything about it. In fact, he never talked to me at all. And I heard later on, he was really pissed off because he had his eye on my, uh, older house and a house needing repair, needed a roof, it needed gutters, needed the aftermarket siding taken off. It, uh, didn't have any subsiding, uh, didn't have any building paper, uh, didn't even have a furnace. And I'm sure he was just itching to bulldoze it. And the house next door wasn't much better. In fact, it was a triplex and noted for crime. And I'm sure that would have been plenty of reason to, uh, to tear it down. And it really disgusts me that a house that has a good bones, good skeleton, but the landlord lets it go, doesn't keep the garbage company coming. And in fact, uh, like the house that was on this lot, turns off the water and the power. And, uh, but still rents it out. And, uh, crime develops. And people say, oh, tear down that house. And people say, oh, tear down that house and things will be wonderful. Well, 1857 house. And I think of, uh, I think of Lincoln and Douglas debating about slavery. Heck, that's how old that house was. It was truly a historic house. So anyway, I think that, uh, you let one, um, oh, high-class builder, I guess you might say, um, build an apartment house and I, I, I'm sure it'll be a nice building. Bill Riles developed it, designed it. But, uh, the next guy comes along and says, why can't I build a apartment house in the historic district? Now, what do you say? We have a historic, we have four historic districts, actually. Two residential historic districts, the downtown historic district and an airport that's a historic district. And I think we need to, uh, protect those historic districts. Uh, some people like old houses. I do. I've, uh, I've managed to live here for 50 years and I'm still enjoying it. Hope I can live another 10 years here. But, uh, in the time that I've been here, the businesses around here, the paper mill, Wanchang, Deale share factory, um, Never Gold Meat Company were all locally owned and were all, uh, a paper mill too besides. And, uh, and, and supported our economy. Albany was a thriving place. Even had a log dump, a bunch of loggers that, uh, enjoyed the taverns downtown. Now, uh, we have tourism. And we have already made attraction for some people. Uh, the old houses, they, uh, and, um, the historic districts in a carousel. And I think if we just kind of then that, uh, we've become, uh, just the ordinary run-of-the-mill town along high fives that, uh, like so many run-of-the-mill towns are just kind of withering away. So I think, uh, letting the camel get his nose under the tent is a mistake. And I am, uh, going to move that, uh, the council deny this land use application. File number HI0420. Uh, because the applicant has not demonstrated that they revoke view credit. It's not for the, and for the following reasons. One, it's too big for the area that where it sits. It dwarfs the rest of the neighborhood and it's going to be a detriment to that single-family neighborhood. It's incompatible with that neighborhood. It, it needs the setbacks from the streets as, uh, people have talked about it lately. So, so that's my motion to deny.
So motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'm not surprised. People don't care about historic districts.
So, okay. Counsel, what would you like to do?
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor.
Uh huh.
I'd like to make a summary, a softball umpire. And one thing I can guarantee you is if Albany doesn't improve, provide, provide affordable housing and jobs, our young people are going to leave. And without young people, this city cannot thrive. We have employers like Mike Sykes. Uh, we have employers all over the city that won't have staff. I've seen young couples move into this area. We've had 102 people move to Albany over the years and they've left because they're young and there's nothing for them here to do. They can't afford to live here. This gentleman and his wife are kind of building a place where young, the professional couple can live here and their kids can be raised here. And, and my daughter lived in that little house when she was in college that was torn down by those three properties. You know how many times I had to go over there because someone is breaking into our car? The place was run down. Yes, these places are fantastic looking, but here's the deal. It's going to, it's going to increase the property value. Everybody lives in that neighborhood. Everyone. Everyone's complaining about it's going to, the property is going to go up $50,000, $60,000 just because they get the permits. And once it's done and it creates business and more people come downtown, the property value is going to go up. As if you understand anything about land, when you increase the value of the property in that land, the people there, the, the, the tax, the city's going to make more money. As if for you to say that if we don't, we do this, it's going to lose people downtown. Dick, I can guarantee you right now, I can go to Cabo City, 15 kids that went to West Alton, do not live in Albany. I can go to Springfield and borrow 25 more. They're leaving here because there's nothing to do here. There's nothing downtown that's going to keep them here. Unless we improve and build affordable housing for those children, they're going to leave. So we have to move, the quality, quality building, you have a building that's going to put something downtown to attract them to come here. I said, I understand you like history. I like history too. I read history every day. I said, but staying stacked is the problem. You can move forward with keeping your historical buildings and be the fire downtown. But just saying no to everything that comes down the pipe makes absolutely
And not the positive thing that you will, will provide. It'll turn the neighborhood toward being a sum and those houses will be lower.
I said nothing about low income. I didn't say one thing about low income. Not one. That's on you, not me.
Well, what were you implying?
I'm implying if we don't, if we don't create change and positive change in this city and grow and, and do better things downtown, nobody's going to be here. The young kids are going to leave. And I've seen it. I see it every day. I've been referring children in this city for 21 years. And I see them all over the state. They're not here because Mr. Johnson, there's nothing in Albany for me. Right, black, blue, none other.
Let's stick to this action on that. So, Rich?
Okay, yes. Um, much has been said about the scale of the buildings and how there are little bitty houses right next door. The little bitty houses were built next to places that were bigger. I mean, uh, you know, there was the 1800s houses and the, the 14-foot tall stuff was built in the 1900s. But having said that, the spirit of the law where we're worried about what happens next door is not about a specific artificial line. I mean, if it is awful to have something that is tall next door, it doesn't make any difference if it's on one side or the other. And we have passed allowed big buildings to be close to houses. I mean, there are big buildings and you look around this spot, there are big buildings to the left and to the right. And in front, well, if you're, if you're on Kalapuya, you look down, there's a five-story building. It's outside the district. That's true, but it's still in the neighborhood. And if it is onerous, if it was a half a block the other direction, it was, oh my God, it's awful and it's terrible. It's no different because it's there. It's the size it is and it's however imposing it is. I mean, I think we have set standards for some things. And then there are some more nebulous things where judgment is used. And sometimes I agree with it and sometimes I don't. But I'm, I'm in favor of this project. I, I want to see these folks, um, become, you know, get, get the job done and make the, the place look better. Um, as far as parking is concerned, uh, how much parking do we demand for any apartment downtown? I think zero is the correct number, right? Well, if it's zero, a couple of blocks away, it's zero for this too.
No.
Downtown. Anyway, that's it.
This is Laura LaRocque. I have access again. I, I can answer that question if you'd like. Um, this particular property and, and many properties in this surrounding area are in the parking assessment district, which does not require parking.
But yet it's still mounted across the street, single-family. That's what's subjective about it. So, yeah. But, okay, counsel, what would you like to do?
I'll make a motion that, uh, I like, uh, option one on, in the packet. So I move the council approved land use application file number H10420. As conditioned in April 29th, uh, 20 staff report. This motion is based on findings and conclusions in the April 29th.
Goodness.
Okay. All right. And any discussion anymore?
Um, I hate to insert myself in this, but I want you to be sure you know which motion you just, um, chose. So if you wanted option one, option one says approve the request as proposed. Or option two, approve the request with conditions of approval. So the staff report had those eight conditions of approval. So then, um, it would be option two, if that's what you intended. If you did not want those conditions of approval, um, then you would need to choose option one.
That is correct.
Correct.
And option one was the original plan submitted by the, uh,
Yeah.
developer.
Yes. And that's what I understand.
Okay. Yeah, I'm agreeing.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
I am definitely opposed. Aye.
Okay. Motion carried, five to one. And so a quasi judicial decision of the city council may appeal to the land use board of appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. All right. Okay. Thank you, folks. And with that, um, our next agenda item, uh, I'm going to move up is the TLT funding discussion because A is hours ahead, so 12:20. And Jorge, you've got to be tired. You just left Texas this morning. And I can't find you on this. Oh, there you are.
Yes, I'm back.
Okay. All right. This item's your
Yes. Uh, well, good morning, uh, mayor and counselors, uh, coming from Austin, Texas today.
Good morning. Good morning.
Okay, then, I'll go ahead and share, uh, my screen. Okay, you should be able to see that. Okay, during the, uh, June 22nd work session, uh, staff received direction from the council to determine how much economic development opportunity fund money would be required uh, to cover ADA, AVA, and city staff for the first quarter of the, of the second half of the biennium. Um, both Lisa and Rebecca provided the respective FTE costs to us and we included that in this, uh, analysis here. On, on this page, what I'm calling page one, on the top section, we provided a summary of the FTE cost from July through September uh, for ADA, AVA, and the city, uh, staff. The required loan, uh, from the economic development opportunity fund that will be required or needed for satisfying this, uh, cost, cover this cost would be $89,406. And as you can see here, um, the first one is ADA. And in this particular case, I combined it, I combined both ADA line items into one. And, uh, Lisa provided that information for us here. Uh, the second one is, uh, AVA's FTE cost. And that's, uh, to cover 4.475 FTEs and include their taxes. The third line item here is the city's, uh, staff, which is .25 of, uh, both, uh, Seth and Sophie, uh, for the economic development portion of it. The bottom portion of this includes the, uh, materials, what we call materials and services. And this I, I'm covering or in the analysis, we're using TLT revenues to cover this cost. Uh, basically the, uh, I'll start with, uh, AVA. What I did here is I took the $32,000 that were allocated for the second half of the biennium, divided by 12 and then multiplied by three and we have three, three months of cost. Uh, I know that Lisa also provided some information here that they also have an additional expense that they cover, uh, trash pickup for downtown. Um, and that's about $8,100. Uh, that's not included in this. I just did that, uh, straight math of taking the allocated amount that we were planning to provide or that we were recommending to provide in just three months out of it. Uh, for AVA, we actually took the, uh, actual amount. Rebecca provided us with a monthly, uh, cost, which is about $4,600. Multiply, multiply it by three and then you get the quarterly, uh, cost for that. And then for the city, I just took what we had, uh, uh, allocated and recommended budget, which is $27,000 for materials and services. And then did a, just a three month out of that and that came out at, at 60, uh, close to $6,900. That's for, uh, materials and services cost from July to, to September. Adding both of these together, the materials and services and the FTE cost comes to about, uh, $118,000. I added some information here in the bottom. Uh, I got this from, from Gina, uh, our finance director. And to cover the loan portion, which is the FTE part, uh, the city can have, uh, an intro, what we call an intra-fund loan. And the terms have to be up to a maximum of 10 years. Um, and then the local government investment pool, we call LGIP rate, is between 1% and 1.5%. So I'll stop here before I go to the next page, um, or I can go to the next page, Mayor.
Yep, that's fine. Were there questions on this page?
Um, I have a question.
Uh huh.
This brings them whole, right?
This, uh, counsel column, this brings them whole from an FTE perspective. That's what the, uh, request I believe was. Uh, in order for materials and services, it brings whole AVA. It does not bring whole ADA or the city.
Well, I guess my, my point is if we're going to have some people taking cuts, uh, I know that both ADA and AVA were ready to bite the bullet. Uh, if the city is biting the bullet other places, uh, the outside agency should also bite some bullets someplace. I mean, if, if the city is 100%, I don't think it is because, you know, police hasn't, um, been fully funded, you know, fully funded as to where they were. It was my understanding this was supposed to have them survive. Because what they were facing was, was killing.
Yeah, this is, this is
I was thinking incorrectly.
Yeah, counsel column, this is only for three months, just July through September. And, uh, the FTE is fully funded, uh, to cover the cost to what they would have had in their budget for the second part of the year, for the first three months. But not for the materials and services. Only ADA, uh, will be covered. But again, this is taking dollars from the, uh, TLT revenues that we were planning to allocate. The number that we were talking about was 130 and we're using some of those dollars to cover that.
I got you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor? Yeah, I agree with, uh, in fact, I know Rebecca's online. Maybe she can, uh, discuss this number. But, uh, um, I was surprised as, you know, $19,000 a month. I was looking for a bare bones, you know, to keep the doors open as opposed to completely gotten them.
Me too.
So Rebecca, are you still online? I see her initials up there. Rebecca, did you want to weigh in?
Hello. Yes, I'm here.
Uh huh.
So, um, yeah, I'm here. So let me pull up, um, some numbers here. So I guess I misunderstood. I thought you had asked what it would take for staffing for three months. And that is the staffing for AVA for three months. Um, based on the numbers that Jorge gave on the second chart, it looks like it's still a 50% cut. Do you not have that, Jorge?
Yeah, um, what I have here Rebecca is you mentioned that 49, 4,500, almost 4,600 was a monthly operational cost. So that times three would be, uh, the 13,700. So that times three would be the $13,794 for three months.
Right, and that's, that is the bare bones for the operational cost. That's not the bare bones up above. It is not that the cost that we're at with the work share program, which is for staffing is $11,520. And that's with the work share, but we will, of course, have to pay that back, just like the city does in insurance. So I thought you were asking for the FTE for three months for what we currently pay for staff. But if you want what it is for 60% of staffing, which is what we're currently at, that is the 11,520. The amount for operational expenses is already cut. That's the one that has, you know, basically pays the rent and the phone and the website and, you know, the bare bones that I included in the email. So I can pull that up if you want the details. But when you added this up, Jorge, I was looking on the, another chart. It's another spreadsheet that was on the next page of your email.
Yes.
And I thought it showed that basically it's a 51% cut, which is why I thought we were on the same page there.
Okay, I can go over the next page. What I did on the next page was I took this loan amount and add it to the revenue so we can actually use that to offset the cost of the FTEs. So basically, I went ahead here, and you can see that the revenues that we had before were expected at $424,000. I added, then I added the $89,000 loan, and then subtracted that from the FTE cost. So you can see that the FTE cost for the city and for, for the other, for both ADA and AVA went up in terms of the expected budget. It used to be here like 130, and then here it used to be about $30,000. So if you take these numbers, these three numbers, and divide it by these three line items, that's how it ends up being. But you're right, the overall reduction will still be a 51% reduction for AVA if just we added that loan amount and then we just extrapolate the cost of the other months. So we were only looking at three months, but this actually accounts for what we're expecting as revenue for the entire year, plus the infusion of the $89,000 that we're putting in the loan, the loan for the first three months.
But if that's the case. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
If that's the case, I don't have a problem with it. I was under the impression that we were bringing it back up to 100%. And, and, and clearly, that's not what my intent was. My intent was to make sure that they survive in a time when we're going to be facing big problems. But if it's, you're, you're taking it down to 50, I mean, clearly, that's not taking it up all the way to 100%. So go ahead, I'm good.
Yep, so Jorge, under downtown association, so the $45,000, what about the Main Street program? Did you roll that into the downtown station?
Yeah, what happened was, you can see this number, $94,000. It used to be about half and half. So I put them all together into one line item, and now we have a budget of $94,000 because it's a combined both items. Now here, we have the $45,000, but their original budget, let me go back to the original spreadsheet, was $16,000 and $15,000. So there's about $31,000 here. But adding that additional infusion from the loan would bring them back to $45,000. That's covering the FTE cost.
Okay, so the one thing I'm concerned about is their $8100 that they, is passed through to Republic Services. Are they going to still have to pay the $8100 out of that $45,000? Because that's just, that's the downtown garbage, you know, being put in, you know, jumping container that they just use as a pass through. So is that out of that 45? So basically, they're, they're getting $8100 less than 45?
We, the, the loan was, and please correct me if this, the assumption wasn't correct. The loan was for the FTE cost, and what I've done for the materials and services is just use what their allocation was expected to be for the. If they, if they use the $8100 on top of this monthly expected cost, they're going to be running out of money before the end of the year.
Oh, yeah.
It's not $8100 a month for the garbage, though.
A year.
For the year, yeah.
Yeah.
This line item.
That's a lot of garbage, $8100.
But that's not for.
Well, we need to.
That's not.
Out of their whole allocation. Have to pay. So that's a big percentage of the budget. It's, I think Lisa's, Lisa on?
Lisa?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Rebecca needs to mute.
So the, so the amount that, that you're getting allocated, can you go back to that, Jorge? Was going to be $45,000 for the year, for the whole year, which includes the increase for the three months, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, but, but the $8,000 of garbage comes out of that?
It's, it's part of the budget because it's not something that we were breaking it down. We're not, I was not aware of $8100 in trash. And it's just part of the budget. So $8100 is still coming out of the normal budget. This is not in addition to this, is my understanding.
Right, but it's just, it's sort of their major reduction that they had, where that's a huge chunk. So is that correct, Lisa?
$8100 is what we anticipate paying Republic this year. That includes a 3% increase in February.
Okay.
So Lisa is.
To be, so from getting $94,000, you're down to 45, plus you take $8100, it's just pass through, correct?
Correct.
The three month loan, though.
No, but that's only, it's only $2,025 for three months.
Right.
Right, I'm just saying, that's, the $45,000 is their whole, their whole year budget. And then you take eight, the pass through is, you know, pass through, dealing with the garbage of the downtown area that they just pass through those funds. So that's, that really still reduces their overall budget for the whole year. That's, that's my concern on that.
So Lisa, is this, this is not just for your operation, $8100 in trash? This is for the downtown businesses, or how is this, you know, made up?
These are the trash cans that you see on the corners throughout the downtown.
So, I mean, I almost think that we should just kind of increase on that loan, just to pay for the truck downtown.
All right, Peter, if you can make a note on the whiteboard, we need to look at this issue, and not tonight. The trash pickup ought to be a city expense or a city, maybe even a city function. But I don't know why we're funneling money to downtown association to take care of a function that ought to be, at the minimum, paid by the city, possibly and performed by the city. So let's take a look at that. And I agree.
And Lisa, Lisa, do you know why was it easier to administer by through downtown association than for the city? You know why?
I don't really have an answer to that. It's, I've done some research, and it looks to have been done that way for the last 10 or 12 years, at least. That's as far back as I can pull records.
Yeah. So, well, I think, you know, when we did our streetscape, added all the extra cans, I think that's when we had that extra expense. So, okay, did you?
Yeah, Mayor, I was just going to agree with Bill that I don't think that that should be a function of the downtown association. I think that should be a function of this, of the city. Because if the downtown association wasn't there or was gone, we'd still have to worry about picking up the trash downtown and from the receptacles. So, and like Bill said, if there's a way, maybe city staff can go collect it and then take it to, to the, their dumpster, say at Public Works or some other place. And I, I have to agree with Bill, there's, we got to look at this a different way.
Let us wholeheartedly agree with that.
Rather than try to solve it tonight, let me take Councilwoman Coburn's request for action, and we'll come back with a little bit more study into it.
Okay, I'm going to do that.
That's a great idea. All right, getting to the AVA, I was a little unclear here. And Rebecca, I mean, I, I can appreciate the fact that we weren't very clear on that or on Monday. But having said that, is the $11,500 a month sufficient to keep the doors open?
Hello, yep, just a second here. So I haven't figured out the percentage of cut that that would be. We were feeling like it was a responsible amount to be cut 50%, which is why when Jorge sent back that, that chart, it seems reasonable. But we do, we are on the work share program, and we can continue that through April. It's a year-long program, but it's at 60%. So that limits what we can do with staff. So, so a staff person who's normally at 40 hours, a five-day work week, is now at three days at that level. So yes, we can maintain what we're doing now, but we'd like to think that we can open our doors and have some regular business hours and do some additional marketing once we're allowed to really promote travel. So we're a little limited by a 70% cut. So that's why I was actually happy to see that the bottom line of that was 50% cut rather than a 70% cut, which is like, I thought what we were going for based on your last conversation.
Sure, well, Rich made a comment that he's good with it, and, you know, I guess I am too. Here's the deal, when I presented this on Monday, kind of thinking outside the box, it's like, you know, let's, let's kind of give it one last gasp before we have to can the whole program. And, you know, we're walking a fine line here, hoping that the economy does start to come back and tourism starts to pick up. If it doesn't, you know, in, in three months, we're just going to have to pull plug probably. So I guess what I'm saying is, is I agree with Rich, I'm okay with this for tonight. And so am I.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment?
Uh huh, yep.
Just to, just to point out, just to, so that everybody's operating with the same understanding, this, this loan pushes things three months down the road. Right, and then repayment starts, and repayment can only happen out of TLT revenues. Because to my knowledge, I don't think there are any other revenues that can be used to pay this, this loan. So it buys, buys basically a three-month reprieve.
Yeah, I understand, and that's why I say we're walking a fine line. We're also going into July, August, and September, which if we're going to see some travel, and if we're going to see some motel use and that type of thing, you know, if it's going to come back, there's a lot of ifs, but I think it's our biggest, best opportunity. If we were going into December, January, and February, I'd say no, it's not going to happen.
Well, travel's going to be limited, yeah.
But we as a council can set the terms of that loan too. So it doesn't have to be immediate payback, it could be spread time, we can set the terms to it. So on that. So do you want to, do you want to hold this off, or do you want to have a motion to what proposed here?
I'm going to. Well, I would, not sure what I would say.
Before.
But all right.
Yeah, before the approval, and that's why I appreciate moving forward with that. The thing is that we need to approve this budget as we have it. And also, one item like Peter was mentioning, that the repayment of this loan, if it, if it doesn't happen this year, next year, we have to allocate for the $89,000 at 1.5% is about $9,600 a year that we have to subtract from TLT funds revenues that are coming in. So I just wanted to point that out. The second part is that if, if you decide to move forward with this, we have to bring back the loan portion of it as, as an item for the city council to approve. You can approve the budget with this intent of having this loan, but the loan portion, we have to bring it back as a different line item or agenda item for the city council to approve.
That'll be fine, yeah, we can do that. So I couldn't hear, there was too much noise, was there a motion?
Well, I saw a motion, but I got a question for Jorge. I understand the budget that you've presented. I don't know that it takes into account what minimal revenue is currently coming in from TLT, does it?
It does. The expected revenues, we were projecting based on that, you know, 40% coming in, is $424,000. However, we're carrying a deficit from the first part of the biennium, there's $193,000. So that provides you a, you know, a smaller amount, you know, smaller amount to work with. That's why we had such a drastic, you know, numbers in terms of cuts, because we were carrying a deficit.
Right, I, I remember that now, thank you. Well, I still would make a motion that we approve this, this budget to, I'd call it an interim budget for three months.
I second it.
Okay, I heard a second motion and a second, any more discussion? And do you want?
Thank you.
Want to include the garbage, to have additional on the garbage bill or not?
Well, I don't want to cut the garbage out of their revenue. I mean, you're just making a bad situation worse. The garbage ought to be a standalone issue because, like we discussed earlier, if ADA is not doing it, the city is. I mean, that's a health issue and everything else, we're not going to let, just quit picking up garbage.
You can look that up in Sims.
He's going to, he's going to check it out. Yeah.
Your honor.
I'm finding your peg here, here, Bessie, yeah.
Yeah, oh, I just have a question. Peter, was what you were saying that we're just kind of kicking the can down the road? It's going to have to be paid back, there's, you know, I just, because to me, I think it's very confusing, for one thing. And if you give money, it's, it's kind of like what's going on right now with not letting renters being evicted because they can't pay the rent. But then, oh, by the way, you have to pay like double rent the next, you know, three months or six months. And so I'm wondering, is that what we're doing here, is we're just kind of piling on?
Well, it depends on how you look at it. You are kicking the can down, up to 10 years and between 1 and 1.5%. And as Councilwoman Coburn said, that allows you to keep the doors open for three months. That's the goal. And then I think the, the hope is that at the end of three months, TLT will have picked up a little bit. But, but it's like any, anything else, if you, if you're going to take out a loan, you better be prepared to pay it back.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I'm concerned about. I mean, you, you want to keep them going, but at what price?
Well.
And then also, I was going to ask somebody, do they, do they know, is there the, the, there for a while, there was extra funding that the TLT could, like, it was $100,000 or something like that, that they could give out to different entities if they needed? Is that gone already?
Yes, it's been utilized. First, we had $100,000 that with the council approved to take it and allocate it to the expo center. And we did that once, and then we had a contingency of $100,000, and that was used to build the budget that we're in. And that was used to build the budget that we're in today.
Oh, okay.
Do it short. Do it short for this year.
Easy come, easy go. All right, thanks.
So did you, Bill, did you want to, you know, was there anything you decide on that garbage to have it be additional funds for the city to pay for that or what?
Well, I I guess I'm a little confused at this point as to how much ADA revenue is being cut in relationship to what has to be paid for the garbage pickup. If you're cutting their operating revenue, but still requiring them to pay for the garbage, it just seems almost like too deep of a cut. So Jorge, you gotta give me a little more information. I'm my brain's not working this late at night.
Well, if you have a motion then for this interim budget, why don't we just go ahead and act on it? And then then we can think about garbage and have staff bring that back at our next meeting, what we wanted to come up with a plan on that.
You remember that remember that Jorge said we have to bring back the loan terms as a separate agenda. Yeah, so there's time to to add that that amount to that loan.
Yes, okay. And then, yeah. Come back with how a plan, how we would handle waste removal. So, okay, so there is motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Mayor, Council Kellum had his, he wanted, I don't think you saw.
Did you? All right.
I was just I was just gonna point out that you're not talking about when you when you take money out of out of the system, make the make the loan. You're not paying it all back next thing like they are with the rent. It doesn't accrue. Only the only the repayment of, you know, up to ten years each month is all that accrues. All you have to deal with. So you're not having to deal with the same amount that you got. That's all I had to say.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, anything else, folks? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Jorge gets sleep. It's I know it's late here for us. And boy, I tell you, you've got almost one o'clock. Hey, have a great vacation.
Sike you're Vegas.
Um, next is Business from the Public, but there wasn't anybody that had signed up previously for business. So next we'll go to Award of Contracts. This is number five, Urgency Small Businesses. Who's the staff on that?
Me, Sharon. It's Ann Catlin.
That's right. Hello, Ann. I should have.
I'll try to be quick. So there are two contracts to award. You have heard about these in previous meetings in May and April. So the first is a contract in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand three hundred and eleven dollars to Community Lending Works to provide a second round of emergency funding for small businesses impacted by COVID- nineteen. And you may remember that in April and May, we had C P, our Community Development Block Grant Public Hearings about this the funding and also about this activity. The money is is helping us leverage some additional funding that's coming from the state. And we wanted to continue the relationship we had with Community Lending Works, who was selected for that first round of funding. And I can answer any questions about that.
And? No, Alex?
So is there a do you have a list of what businesses received that money?
Well, we haven't. Uh, no, we have.
What about the first round?
In the first round, I don't have that list. Community Lending Works has that list and Seth isn't on the call. But I think he knows the businesses. I think it was seventeen or thirteen or seventeen businesses were helped in that first round.
So I I'd like the council to see that list.
Yeah, we can get that list. Right, just email it to us.
Yes, I appreciate that.
All right. Okay, so there is a motion that's needed and that would be to award the contract of two hundred and eight thousand three and eleven dollars to Community Lending Works. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carried. Hey, we finished the first page. So next is the Ward of Contracts, and this is Housing Rehabilitation Loan Program. Ann?
Yes, um, this is a recommendation that you award a contract in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars to Dev Northwest of Corvallis. This is an activity that we held a public hearing on back in April and in May. And the funding for this is coming from the Community Development Block Grant Funds, two hundred and four thousand in this upcoming year, twenty twenty, and carryover funds of thirty-six thousand. The Dev Northwest applied for this money through a competitive process. And it would continue a program that is already you did already approve this activity in the funding amount back in April and May.
Yeah, so these properties.
Go ahead, Alex.
These prop the houses are rehabilitated and are in Albany, right?
Yes, they have to be. It's owner occupied housing. And the owners have to be have incomes less than eighty percent of the area median income. So it is helping a lot of elderly folks that are on fixed incomes that can't afford to replace their roofs, for example, repaint their house or repair siding, that kind of thing. And we do have a lot of old homes. We've been talking about historic homes, but we have a lot of housing stock that's was built before nineteen eighty. So we're seeing a lot of homes that do need a lot of repair. And these are loans. Loans are repaid into a revolving loan fund, so this money will stay circulating in the community when those loans are repaid.
Good. Thank you, Ann. Appreciate it.
And and Dev Northwest has we've allocated to them before off of our hedge funds. So they do a great job. So, okay, counsel, would you like to make a motion to award that contract to Dev Northwest?
I'm moved to approve.
Okay, all right, motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, great, motion carried. And next is the CARES Act in agreement. This is on page sixty-eight. That Gina?
Yes.
Gina.
Mayor and council.
Gina.
Beautiful care.
I'm too.
The state is allocating CARES funding to cities and counties and other small special districts in Oregon. During the first the first funding period or costing period, which was from March to May fifteenth, the city had incurred costs of about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars related to the COVID event. We've submitted those funds to the state. And I am just asking for permission to sign an agreement with the state to receive those funds. It 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 would be up to a hundred percent of the amount at the amount we requested. There's no matching required for it. So if we do that, I can get that get that going and we could get reimbursement relatively soon.
So moved.
Second. All right, motion's been made. In a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. And then next, adoption of the consent calendar. If there isn't any items that needs to be pulled off this evening, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay, I think Dick's second and all those.
All right.
I'll listen, baby, say aye.
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 All right, it was getting sleepy.
Aye, 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 aye.
Oppose. Okay, motion. All right, I think Republic Services' report was canceled. Is that right, Marilyn?
Postponed.
Postponed?
Yeah.
Okay.
But Julie was on the call.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was postponed to July eighth.
July eighth, okay.
Very good.
All right, okay, we made it through the business from the council. Let me start at the top. Mike?
I have nothing.
Okay, Bessie?
Um, other than is this Marilyn's last meeting?
It is. I was gonna mention that when we get to the.
Okay, I will I won't steal your thunder then. I have nothing. Thank you.
It's Marilyn's last, and boy, are we being brutal to her, having to be. She's still at home since her and it's eleven o'clock.
At least she didn't have to read nineteen letters.
Yep, I think.
Yeah, that's right.
And I think you were you had your camera on. You were cleaning out your office. Looked like she was packing. Okay, and Bill?
Nothing.
Nothing, Dick?
I'll pass.
Okay, and Alex?
I have nothing for right now, other than wanting to go to bed.
Okay.
Go to sleep.
I have seventeen items.
Stay in the crosswalks, man. Stay in the crosswalks.
Yeah.
I would say mute him.
Okay, and I didn't have anything tonight. It's too tired anyway. So Peter?
I I just wanted to recognize Jorge. He's off off now. But at seven-thirty tomorrow morning, he has to pick up a rental truck and help his daughter move to Pennsylvania. So he's working quite a quite a.
Well, I think someone just got back from like San Francisco. I think she just got got into her vacations.
Everybody. And then Matt Harrington for sticking on and making everything work relatively smoothly tonight.
Yeah, thanks, Matt.
Yep, Matt.
And you don't you don't see her. Mary Dibble is there still taking taking notes at this hour.
Yeah.
As we said, Marilyn's last meeting as a staff member.
I know, Marilyn, we're gonna come on. So did you get things packed up or she's still on?
I'm still here.
Okay.
She's just hiding.
I've still I've still got a lot to do.
You got a couple days in tonight.
Yeah, all right, anything else?
No.
So, okay, so our next meeting is July sixth, work session, July eighth, regular session. We're adjourned. Drive safe. No?
Drive safe, yeah.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Problem.
All right.
Night.
Night.